Welcome to the Second City Council Meeting today. This is our regularly scheduled council meeting for September 27th. Before we go on any further, I'd like to invite David Suhoer up for the invocation, and that'll be followed by Councilmember Maran DeWes with the pledge.
Hi.
Thank you, President Hall. Thank you. Heads bowed, please. Mother, Father, God of all people, we come today in our humble way to shape a small part of your creation, gathering to a task in your diverse and glorious presence. Together, we invoke your unique blessings and your life essence. May the efforts of this council blend the justness of Allah with the wisdom of Odin. May Mithra, the everlasting, ground them with the grace of Mother Gaia. May Yahweh forgive their shortcomings and Bedu foresee their salvation. Make light their mission, Brahma and Dionysus, and imbue each decision with the mercy of Isis. Whatever your virtues, name, or form, may we be worthy of this holy equal assemblage. Baha and Elohim, we beseech you. Krishna and Ekonkar, come, illuminate our civic path by moon, water, earth, and sun. And we praise you, Jehovah of Christ, Witzalapotli, and Ba'al, for the sanguine sacrifice that frees us all. And for the bounty of reason, science, and logic, we thank the one deity none of us knows, that of humanist, atheist, and agnostic. Divine love, lead us, enlightened by Bedu and Eschu-- excuse me, Buddha and Eschu, empowered by Thetan spirits, that we may govern with the wisdom and the good of all gods of our nation. Please impart our humble congregation with prudence, prosperity, and peace this day, and so we pray. Amen.
Mr. DeWes.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. We're moving into a period of open forum here. We've got a long tradition of giving citizens the right to get up and speak on any topic that they want to. And we've got two places for that, is between now and six o'clock for the first open forum, and then after we've conducted all of our business, then it's unlimited amount of time. I've got several cards here, and I'm thinking that most of these are wanting to speak to the issue of the veto. And if not, when I call your name out, and you have some other topic that you want to speak to, then please come forward. But if you're wanting to speak to the veto itself, there's going to be a council member making a motion to move that portion of the meeting forward. And, you know, after we do our awards and presentations, and you'd have the opportunity to speak to it then, and that would actually be more appropriate. Mr. Taylor, Mark Taylor. Okay.
Welcome back.
It's good to be back in the city again. Council President. Council, thank you. Of course, who I'm addressing is the press conference that the mayor would come to the important meetings. I thought this would be important, but I'm gonna go ahead and make my statement, even though he's not here to hear it. Hopefully somewhere in the building, he'll be hearing it. Mr. Mayor, during your press conference earlier this week, you stated that you will start attending important council meetings. Would you please describe what issues you believe to be important enough to attend and be here to listen to the citizens of this fine city? I hope you get the message. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Marlon Mueller.
Hi, Marlon Mueller, 403 West Gregory. I'm with Occupy. We're interested in better government. And I'd like to thank all of you for the time to speak here. I had been prepared to expound on statements I had made this week, or at this week's meeting of the whole, in which I laid out the high points of my views on the mayor's duty to attend all city council meetings, as is stated in the charter. But it seems that the wind was knocked out of my sails by the statements the mayor made at yesterday's mayoral news conference, where it was reported that he said he would start going to important council meetings. This obviously leaving me speechless. Just kidding. The charter of the city of Pensacola should be looked at as a business contract. This contract lays out the powers and duties of those citizens who, by election or appointment, become signatory to this agreement, and lays out the boundaries in which those powers and duties can be applied. The mayor, being signatory to this contract by election and acceptance of the office, is bound by the powers and duties listed. Over a page and a half of the 18 pages in this contract is devoted strictly to the mayor. I'd like to read from that page and a half some of the articles of Section 4.01, titled "Mayor." And I'll start with A, powers and duties. The mayor, who shall serve in a full-time capacity and shall exemplify good citizenship and exhibit a cooperative spirit, shall have the following powers and duties. Now, I'll jump to number two, from A, number two. Number two, to enforce the charter and ordinances of the city and all applicable county, state, or federal general laws, special laws, or ordinances. Now, I'd like to jump to number 11. 11, to attend all meetings of the city council with authority to participate in discussions, but without power to vote. There is nothing in the rest of this section that allows for voiding or reinterpretation of any of the listed and numbered powers and duties. So, to summarize, 4.01, A, powers and duties, the mayor, not the mayor's office, not the mayor's staff, but the person who has been elected and accepts the title, number two from A, has the duty to enforce the charter, as well as number 11 from A, attend all city council meetings. These are his duties. For almost two years now, the mayor has seen fit to shirk these duties. In doing so, he's denied the citizens of Pensacola access to their mayor in a public forum, where sunshine laws can apply. Up to this moment, the mayor and I don't see eye to eye on the subject of the mayor's attendance to all city council meetings. And my training and experience tells me that the best way to deal with the difference of opinion in a contractual dispute is for the parties to discuss their views and hope that both parties can find common ground. But in my practical side, I realize there is no common ground in this instance. Either the mayor attends all meetings of the city council, or he doesn't. To this end, a suit naming Ashton Hayward mayor is being prepared in the hopes that this issue will be rectified in the courts. I want you all to know that my only interest in this issue is better government. This city government is set up to serve the people of Pensacola. The better the government, the better they are served. I believe that the mayor attending all city council meetings will make this a better, more efficient government, and all citizens of Pensacola will benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. DeWes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And just very quickly to Mr. Mueller, that I will bring this up again during new business. I'd like to offer some relief very quickly, that there are other charters within the state of Florida for a mayor council form of government that the mayor must attend. And if the mayor does not attend three meetings, he can be removed as mayor, or she can be removed as mayor. So, there are other options out there, and I'd love to discuss those a bit further during new business. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, the following cards here said they want to speak during an open forum, but again, they wrote down that they wanted to talk to the budget, and that's Mr. Matt Peacock, Jonathan Thompson, Amber Kelly. Mr. Taylor's already indicated that is what he was wanting to speak to. And Ms. McKnight, is that what you were wanting to speak to? Okay, then please come on up. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. I'm Laura McKnight, 4200 Langley Avenue. I'm also the president of the Scenic Heights Neighborhood Association and the president of the Council of Neighborhood Association Presidents of Pensacola. And I just wanted to deliver kind of a quick verbal love note to the city council. At our last CNAP meeting the other night, we discussed how important it is to keep that idea that we all love Pensacola, and we appreciate the recognition that members of council have given CNAP as far as our importance. And we just appreciate the job that you do, and that we hope that you guys will encourage members of your district to form neighborhood associations and to look into joining our group of neighborhood presidents. We do sit down at a roundtable and exchange ideas and information and support each other. So, again, I just wanted to thank you all for the job that you're doing and tell you that we appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Ms. McKnight. Ms. Myers.
Yes, I'd like to thank Laura, and I would like to send a love note to CNAP. We love what CNAP is doing. CNAP benefits all of our districts and the whole city, and it's a great organization. And thank you very much for coming down and delivering a love note. It's reciprocal, I can assure you of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And for those that do want to speak to the budget issue of the 2013, put on your card item 17A.
Thank you, President Hall, and members of the council. I'm Rebecca Hyer, 2101 Scenic Highway. What I would like to speak to tonight is the issue of diversity. Yesterday, I was listening to a TED Talk. Now, I don't know if you're familiar with TED, but it's a forum that covers future issues, things that deal with technology, arts, social change, and science. And this particular talk was given by Dr. Stephen Kleinberg. He has been, for the last two decades, the president of the Urban Planning Group in Houston, Texas. And when I was an undergraduate many years ago, he was a professor of sociology at Rice University, and I was fortunate to be able to take three classes from him. So, I know he's a very dynamic speaker, and he really speaks from the heart. And what he was talking about in this particular talk is why he felt, as an urban planner, that Houston had been such a success. And as many of you know, Houston has been a notable economic success for quite so many years now. And what he pointed out, what he thought was a key issue in Houston's success, was their ethnic diversity. Houston has been a majority-minority city for decades. It roughly has four equal parts culturally and ethnically. It has African-American, Hispanic, white European, and Asian. So, he, Dr. Kleinberg, said that was, he thought, the most important factor of why Houston had been able to flourish, because of the diversity of ideas, diversity of cultures. And so, having listened to this talk, which was very inspiring, I thought back to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the council on Monday, which I watched online. And the issue of diversity came up there as well. And I was a little disappointed, thinking back, about how it was being addressed, because it was almost as if the point of having diversity in boards and commissions is just a matter of the color of the face that you see in the meeting. But in fact, that's not what it's about at all. What it's about is ideas. People of different backgrounds are going to have different experiences, and that's going to be true. It's been true as long as I've known. It's probably going to be true for some time. We've, we hear a lot of talk about a colorblind society, but I think we all know, we're not there yet. And so, people do have different experiences based on race and gender. And for that reason, it is important for boards to represent that diversity that exists within the city, not just to give people an opportunity to serve, but because of the strength that it brings to those boards and commissions. Now, Houston has had, in the last several decades, mayors of people of color, of different nationalities or different ethnicities. They've had women as mayor. It's a diversity that I think we would be well-served to copy or emulate. So, I want you to take even more seriously the issue of appointing people diverse membership to the various boards. And tying back to what Dixie said earlier, I'll finish.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, can Ms. Hyer finish her thoughts? I was curious as to the conclusion of that.
This is Marry.
Ms. Hyer, if she could just finish her thoughts. I wanted to hear the conclusion.
Sure. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Going back to the press conference yesterday, many people found it interesting that of the members of the council that were present at that press conference, there were no women present. And I think that was a little bit more than coincidence. I think it reflects the different views and approaches, and apparently, the viewpoint of the women was determined by someone to be not appropriate for that particular council and, or for that particular conference. And I find that very disturbing.
Thank you. Councilwoman Marsh.
Yes, I want to thank you for bringing the topic of diversity up. At the next, the last open forum, I'm going to be asking to speak at open forum. I have my blue card here. And what I plan to speak about is the role of women in our society. And I found it also rather strange that all of the men, it appears, were called to participate in the mayor's olive branch press conference, but none of the women sitting on the city council were called. Now, I may not have attended, however, that's not the issue. The issue is, if he should have, in my opinion, reached out to me with an olive branch, and for me to either accept or decline, but that did not happen. And I regret that, and I will address this in more detail at the, I don't want to take up open forum time discussing that issue from my perspective right now.
Thank you. Councilman Gerald.
I'm okay, Mr. Vice President. Cancel my light.
Thank you. I think that's all of the cards that we have for open forum, I think.
There was one other gentleman. There was a gentleman, I'm sorry, I don't have the card right here in front of me, that wanted to speak to the general audience. Yes, sir, just please state your name. Let me get it. Yes.
Jermaine Williams, 1309 Northeast Street.
Yes, sir, thank you for coming, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. I just want to say, you know, I admire most of y'all up there, but I do want to say, when all this bickering is done back and forth between the mayor's office and the city council, I don't want y'all to forget about the people over here that's dying where I'm living at. You know, it seem like neither the mayor's office nor the city council has really taken a look at what's going on in the community. Where I'm from, where I hear gunshots that keep me up, when I gotta be up at 5:30 in the morning for work, and a police helicopter hovering over the air of Pensacola like William Watts or something. This is crazy. The mayor, we don't even have a representative for the mayor, let alone him. If it weren't for the cameras or whatever, the newspaper, I wouldn't even know how he looked. Somebody need to step up. Either one of y'all, Mr. Simmons, Blank Chair, somebody needs to step up, and I challenge y'all. We pay taxes too, and we also vote. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Williams, just so you know, that the mayor's representative is in the audience. He's already positioned for doing awards and presentations. Mr. Gary Sampson. Now, Gary, you weren't here when I said that this portion of the meeting, if you want to talk to the budget item, the veto, that'll be item 17A.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gary Sampson, 1517 East Jackson. I rushed down here. I can't always be here on time. I try and be here more often than the mayor. Like what the man just said, you know, the last, I'd say, 10 years, we've been focusing on other things, mainly the CRA. Other issues, I mean, when you got a pothole on Main Street or Palafax, and you can't pick up a phone and call someone, that's a problem. But the gentleman's right, we haven't neglected the other issues. I'm sorry, I'll chill out here. But he's right. We got a whole city. You people represent not just your district, but the whole city. And I apologize for not hearing what you were saying earlier. My issue is Downtown Improvement Board, and I wish you would call it that. It's a Downtown Improvement Board. And the mayor wants to appoint Joe, Mr. Peacock. Now, you people have to follow the state law and represent a cross-section of our citizens. And I use the word citizens, not someone outside of our area and not a registered voter. That's what you gotta look at. Now, you just got, well, there was a lady on the downtown. Right now, I can't even remember her name. But you gotta obey the law. And if you don't know what it is, ask the staff in backup that you hadn't hired yet, or your attorney, or maybe you wanna go to the mayor's staff. But what I'm trying to say is, you gotta appoint someone that represents the Downtown Improvement Board. I think it's a, live there or business there, in a cross-section. I mean, a woman that was just, I don't know, believed of a duty, that military term you might understand. But this lady I know is good. Now, Mr. Peacock, I have watched him and observed him mainly on the coalition. He was the economics, environmental, no, economics and growth, or economics and, well, anyhow. But I wasn't impressed. And back in '07, I attended one of his firm's banquets. And that was in '07, and they're pushing, you know, let's go out and buy. I'm saying, let's go out and dump. I didn't hear anyone say that. But I think she's qualified, and I questioned him. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. DeWes.
Actually, I had my light on for the previous speaker. I wanted to make sure that he had a chance to meet with the mayor and chief, and maybe his district councilperson or an at-large councilperson. I don't know if he said that he had had a meeting yet or had reached out to anyone. I just wanted to find out. He may already be gone, though.
Yeah. Is Mr. Williams still in the audience?
He stepped out.
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President. And a couple of things. And this is what open forum is all about. But we're bundling several issues to include diversity, which we've been, I guess I could say, pleading for, for years. That's not the issue today. And to the previous speaker, Mr. Williams, it's apparent that he has overlooked the efforts of the Sheriff's Department and PPD, and the fact that we at Movement for Change have scheduled our fourth and fifth Stop the Violence Rally. There are rallies going on all over the place. The problem is, we're not getting the cooperation from the people who are committing these acts. Perhaps he might want to deliver that same message to them. And as a city and a county, I think we're doing as much. It's not as if someone would call up and say, hey, PPD, I'm getting ready to shoot somebody. The cops generally get there after the fact. So, when we start bundling things, and it's all leading to one thing, there appears to be a general misunderstanding of what a city does, what a city can do, and the direction that we're all hopeful. And I believe everybody in this room would be in favor of violence reduction, without question. But until we get the cooperation of those who sell guns, those who make guns, whether they're sold legally or illegally, the problem, I don't think, is with administration or a council, but the problem's with the criminals. They're the ones committing the acts. So, if we can be somewhat level-headed this evening, and then we, I heard Mr. Sampson throw the DIB in, and its concerns over diversity, this city reeks with a lack of diversity. It's not just on boards and commissions. It's about high-paying jobs and employment at the school district, at the city, at the county, everywhere. And now, we want to play a little game about diversity on boards? It's about high-paying jobs. It's about students going away to college and coming back and having an opportunity to be employed. And if we, as citizens, take a good look in the mirror, we would see what the problems are. It's not about boards and commissions. Those jobs don't pay any money. It's about promotions. It's about everything we do. And I know that I may have, I doubt if I bored you, but I'm still waiting for a response that we put the pressure where it needs to be. It's not about the veto. It's about moving the city forward and opening up the doors of opportunity. And besides, I have 65 years of experience in this town. I know what I'm talking about. Diversity hasn't been, it's never been there. So, if we think that DIBs and boards and commissions is the way we want to go, let's look at our employment throughout. And in fact, I'm almost tired of talking about it, because I get no reaction, I get no response, I get no support. So, we can throw a few people on boards. That was not my intent in the beginning. But when you look at our major companies, they don't practice it. Every time I pick up the paper, there's a new head guy over here, a new head guy over there. And we're still supposed to wait until our number finally comes up. And let's talk about it. Police chief, sheriff, school superintendent, I'd have to live 99 to even think about that. But if we're going to talk about it, it's not just about boards and commissions. It's not just about vetoes and the direction that the city is trying to go, which, by the way, the citizens supported the charter and by a majority, and they supported the mayor by a majority. And you're not always happy with your choices sometimes. That's why we have divorces in the court. You can fall in love and be in love, next thing you know, there's a divorce. So, it's not always a happy trail. But let's stop and take a look at what we are really doing. The comments about, what was it, Houston? The efforts that they've made, but they opened the doors of true diversity. They didn't just talk about it and pray about it.
Mr. Gerald, let's finish.
So, I'll stop there.
Yeah, we can pick it up in the second open forum.
I want you to pick it up. They know what I'm talking about.
Okay, all right. Mr. Johnson, very quickly, we've passed that six o'clock mark.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. I'll just make two quick comments. Mr. Williams talked about crime and maybe the lack of attention that it gets from this city council, but we had a very lengthy discussion about crime at our last budget hearing. And-- And there's Mr. Williams coming back, but we had a very lengthy discussion about that and what's important in this community. And so it is recognized here and discussed. The other comment I'd like to make is to Ms. McKnight. I'd like to thank her for the pat on the back. Very often, we are criticized at this city council, just trying to do our job, just trying to be a check and balances, just trying to ask tough questions. And it's not to move this city forward, but it's just to do what we're elected to do, and that's to look at issues and look at them in different ways. But I just want to tell Ms. McKnight, I appreciate the pat on the back, means a lot. Often, we're criticized, and it does mean, a pat on the back means an awful lot. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. You were given earlier this week the minutes from the September 13, 2012 city council meeting. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote. Madam Clerk, for the record, all council members are present. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. And how about some good news and something we can all agree upon?
Yes.
Can I have the firefighters from Engine Five, Lieutenant Jared Gruber, firefighters Tony Ramirez and Mike Dane, Dalton Spears, and from Ladder Truck 11, Captain Jason Widlick and firefighter Lincoln Mixon come forward with the President Hall, please? Please.
Just stay right there in front of the lectern. I'm not moving these to you.
On July 28, 2012, these firefighters responded to a medical emergency involving a 26-year-old unconscious female who had gone into cardiac arrest. As a direct result of their rapid response, applying the automated external defibrillator and performing CPR, the victim was successfully resuscitated prior to the arrival of EMS personnel. They demonstrated a high level of professionalism under great duress and were instrumental in her favorable outcome. If it had not been for the quick response of these firefighters and the professionalism they demonstrated, it is highly likely that the results would not have been as favorable. The responding crews were recognized by Physio Control, the company that manufactures and maintains the automated external defibrillators, AEDs, and were awarded certificates on behalf of the mayor and city council. It is an honor and privilege to present these certificates as Mr. Hall, or excuse me, as President Hall is doing. Gentlemen, excellent job. Employee of the Month. In order to more strongly emphasize the city's commitment to outstanding performance, one employee is recognized as the employee of the month. Please recognize with us Michelle Cogly, Clerk, One Library, as employee of the month for September. The City of Pensacola is proud to recognize Michelle as employee of the month for September. She started with the Southwest Library in 2004 and has been with the Tryon Branch Library since 2007. She's an excellent employee who's flexible, conscientious, and unflappable. She has two programs that she has made uniquely her own. The first is the Come Sit Stay and Read to a Dog program. This program, which is administered by the Delta Society, lets children improve their readings and confidence by reading aloud to specially-trained therapy dogs. Michelle is at every program, setting up the room, gathering books, and ensuring that every child has the opportunity to read. She is partially hearing disabled, and she has known sign language since she was a young teenager. Having someone who can actually sign is an asset to the library, but Michelle goes further, which leads to her second program. She teaches simple songs and the alphabet and sign language to preschool Storytime students. The kids and their parents love learning another language. Because Michelle puts her entire self in everything that she does, and her dedication is evidence to everyone she encounters, we are proud to recognize her as September's employee of the month. Congratulations. These milestones, which are observed at five-year intervals, are symbols of commitment, hard work, and dedication in serving the people of Pensacola. Employees are the city's most valuable asset. As part of the city team, they individually and jointly seek ways to improve the quality and efficiency of services to every citizen. Tonight, we have the opportunity to publicly recognize and thank this special group of employees. As I call your names, will you please come forward to receive an award and be recognized by the city council? For five years, Jed Martin, professional firefighter. Jed has excelled at his job and provides great leadership among his peers. He recently received the highest score on the Fire Lieutenant Promotional Examination and continues to be an asset to the organization. Congratulations. 20. Leslie has been a stalwart firefighter in the community over the past two decades. He has volunteered countless hours in various settings and has been a model employee. He has demonstrated great pride in his job and has made a significant impact in the Fire Department through his efforts.
One final applause for everybody. That concludes your presentation.
Yes, Mr. President, it does. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am asking you to consider whatever action is necessary regarding a waiver or amendment of rules in order to move item 17A on the agenda up to the first agenda item for discussion now.
Well, if we've got a second, we've got a second. Ms. Myers.
I was just going to second the motion.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I don't think there's much need for discussion on this. Please vote.
Excuse me, what is the motion?
Oh, to move 17A up to the front of the.
Okay.
Okay. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 17A has to do with the veto, and have you guys want to deal with that? Do you want to hear it from the public first, or? Let me just tell you, Ms. Myers, I'm going to try to keep this to two terms per council member. So it might do best if we waited for the public to do it, but you're certainly free to go ahead and speak now.
Well, I was just going to ask, do we need a motion and a second in order?
Oh, you're right. You're right.
That's where I was going, in order to give the public an opportunity to weigh in.
Sure.
I think that they need to weigh in on a motion.
What's your motion?
My motion is that the council override the mayor's veto.
There's a motion and a second. Now discussion. Would you guys like to hear from the public first?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay. I've got several cards here, and there may be others that choose to get up and speak to this subject. I would just ask that regardless of which side you're on, if you had intended to say something that's already been said two or three times, is just kind of get up and say what that last person said, or I'm supporting overriding the veto, or I support the mayor's position on it, and not go take your full four minutes. And your sentiments will be registered accordingly. So, okay, Mr. Mark Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President and the city council, and it's great to see the mayor in, and excited to have him. And I hope that all these meetings will be deemed important from the news conference yesterday. It'd be great to see you at more of them. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. I'll read so I don't go over my minutes. Dear city council, I respectfully request that you highly consider casting your vote to override the mayor's veto. I strongly believe this is the right move for our city for the following reasons. Number one, there is significant doubt that the veto reversal is even legal. We recently learned that the state attorney general, Pam Bondi's, opinion disagreed with Mr. Messer's opinion concerning the audit. There is good reason to believe this is also not legal. I'm no attorney, but by definition, a veto is designed to negatively affect something, not to positively move something around. In addition, please ask the city attorney to make a formal request to the attorney general for her opinion on this veto and on possible future vetoes as defined by the charter. On the other hand, we know the council's action is legal and was handled properly. Number two, good government is compromise. It gives and it takes. The mayor is getting over 80% of the marketing budget that he asked for, and in the big picture, get this, he's getting 99.846% of his $221 million budget. I would love to live life at 99.846 of everything that I wanted. And I believe that shows significant compromise on behalf of the council. As we all have heard, how most Pensacolans are saddened by the logo and the slogan change, not to mention the disappointment in not using a local firm to keep this money in our community, as well as the inaccuracies by the Zimmerman Agency, which included showing our airport over in Mississippi or Louisiana on that expensive television commercial. By leaving the important marketing dollars in place, you are addressing Pensacola as a whole. In 12 successful years of business, I have never marketed myself as the CEO. The money in question appears that it is budgeted to market the mayor's office. I market my business as a whole, the team, the services, and the quality of our work. With the exception of our enterprises, Pensacola needs the same consistent overall marketing. As a potential resident or relocating business, isn't just buying into one part of Pensacola. They get it all, the good, the bad, and the ugly. And lastly, the legislative branch of our city needs help, and it needs money to do this. What you've transferred to your budget is a great start, but in all honesty, you need more. You guys can't do it on your own. A $14,000 paycheck is not going to provide for your families. Most of you have to work other jobs to make that happen. You guys need the money. I would love to see the council become a lean, mean legislating machine, excuse the pun there, but the only way to get there is with a great staff. You have a great clerk, and let's add a couple of great executives along with a council attorney that can help advise and bring the facts to each of you so that you will be better prepared to call the shots and to run this city the way it deserves to be run. You're doing a great job with what you have, but let's step it up a notch with a larger staff to keep this thing moving. The council in Tampa has over 10 direct staff members. I'd love to see three or four here. I look forward to the day that every meeting finishes with productive ordinance additions and/or modifications that help keep our city moving forward and moving ahead of the growth that we are all hopeful for. Please, for these three reasons and for many more, please vote to override the mayor's veto, and let's move our city forward together. I voted for the charter. I voted for a mayor-council form of government. I didn't vote for a strong mayor. I voted for an equal balance of different rights and responsibilities and duties. I voted for our council president when he ran. Mr. Spencer is my councilman. I voted for him. I voted for Councilman Pratt at large. And guys, we've got to do this thing together. This is a great first start, seeing the mayor here. I'm excited about the unity that's putting out, and I look forward to seeing this thing moving forward together. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, council, for allowing me to come up and speak. I do live in the city. I live over off of Spring Street. I work out in the county over off of Langley. I actually just went to the Chamber Luncheon earlier, which was a great and exciting group of people to see that we are exciting to try to bring in new business. The excitement that was there was just phenomenal. People really want to make a better Pensacola. We need to take advantage of this opportunity and market our great city and our assets. We need to compete for jobs, businesses, and talent. I believe Pensacola can be great. I hope each of you do as well, and I hope you will uphold the mayor's veto. It's time to start working together and help our city succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Jonathan Thompson. I'm a PYP board member, lifelong Pensacola resident, and I'm just here today to talk on behalf of PYP and speak a little bit of offering our thoughts on the current budget conflict and the issue of the veto. But first, I want to make sure, I think it's really important for everyone to understand why we care about this issue, and that ties into why PYP even exists and what we believe. Our mission is very simple. The mission of the Pensacola Young Professionals is to share our passion for and belief in the Pensacola Bay Area and to be a catalyst for positive change in our community. The first part of that is very simple. We all love Pensacola. We believe in this city, and we want to see it continue to grow and develop like it has over the last decade. Many of us who grew up here remember the decades of stagnation. Pensacola was always down on itself. No one was positive. There was all sorts of negativity. The emphasis today has to be on what can be done in our city and not what can't be done. And so, speaking to the current issue, it's fair to say, a lot of PYP members, if you've seen our surveys, are in support of the mayor, in support of the general direction that the city is moving. But it's important to understand, our mission does not necessarily align us with particular politicians. What it aligns us with is the thousands of people in the community who want to see Pensacola continue to grow and flourish. And one of the ways, the crucial way we can do that is by being positive on our city, both within the city and in the way we market it to other communities, other young professionals throughout the United States. PYP knows for a fact, because we've seen it over the years, that Pensacola has a real problem attracting and retaining young talent. There's a perception that there are no good jobs here. There's also a perception that there's no cultural life and that it's a very small town. It's very backwards, it's very small-minded, there's a lot of backbiting. And unfortunately, sometimes, when the political process spills over into the public the way it has, that stereotype is reinforced. And we don't want our young people to leave the city in droves. Our future depends on them. So we want to see forward motion continue in this city like it has for the past decade, but our window of opportunity, please understand, is not going to stay open forever, and especially if our city leaders fritter away too much time with petty squabbles and they're wasting their time and energy tearing each other's ideas down. That window of opportunity is going to close, and our city is going to go nowhere. So please understand your role in serving as models of leadership and accountability for the young people in the community, and your role in making Pensacola a place that young people want to stay, not just want to stay, but want to move here. We've had a number of PYPers who have come to this area and who have elected to stay here when they've had a choice of living anywhere they want in the country. We have to keep that forward momentum, and one of the ways we do that is by successfully marketing our city. So if you have a So if you have an objection to the ad contract or what have you, please make sure it is not subject to personal grudges or petty differences, because that is very much a perception within the city, and if that continues, it's really going to hurt our potential, our momentum, and it's going to make our young people not want to stay here, not want to live in the city, and not feel good about this city. And that's crucial. We have to have that positivity and cooperation. So please put aside egos, learn to cooperate. There are ways to disagree with courtesy and respect without resorting to public venom and personal attacks. So please remember that true leadership is proactive and not reactive. And frankly, most of what I've seen throughout the entire debate has been sides reacting to each other and assigning blame and heaping criticism. Please show us true leadership by creating solutions and not just pointing out problems. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Amber Kelly. Welcome, Ms. Kelly.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amber Kelly. I am a permanent resident in Pensacola, Florida. I was born and raised here, and I want to start off by telling you guys that I am excited about living in Pensacola. I could go anywhere, just like many of us could, but I love being here. I'm a Blue Wahoo season ticket holder. I love petty cabs. I'm very excited about the growth and momentum that we have, and to reiterate, one of Jonathan's topics was about being solution-oriented. There's a phrase that you can't read the label from inside the bottle. I know that people were disappointed because economic dollars were lost when the mayor went out of this area for marketing, but on the other side of that, I think that it's great to have that perspective, and that's part of the reason you allow us to speak to you now is to get that perspective, to see the other side. I think that someone said that most people don't like the logo. I don't know that you could say most. I know there are people that don't. I know that people are disappointed because they feel like we're losing some sort of history by not representing the city of five flags, but there is history here. So if we can use a new logo and a new branding for Pensacola to get people here, we can still show them the same things. We still have all of our, we have our parades, we have our festivals. It's festival season right now. I think there's a lot of things that Pensacola offers, and so I would really encourage you to please move forward with the advertising budget and let us show the rest of Florida and this area what Pensacola has to offer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kelly. Are there any other cards for seventeen A? Okay. Mr. McKenzie. Oh, okay. And if you've not filled out a card yet, go ahead and speak. Is there one in there already for you? Okay.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Aleister McKenzie, and mayor. Nice to see you. I hope you all have had a chance to read a legal opinion that Ms. Myers asked me to write. I want you to know upfront that she paid me absolutely no money to do this, and if Mr. Spencer or the mayor himself had come to me and asked me to write this, you would have the same result. I also have no opinion on whether you should override this veto or not. If you've had a chance to look at this, what it boils down to was an explanation of what the legal definition of a veto is and what occurred here. As you know, when you made the amendments to the budget, you made those amendments to resolution number forty-dash-twelve. Forty-dash-twelve is the budget itself. So we'll take the first item, for example, that was changed, or we'll take the first item that was vetoed by the mayor. Let me pull to that page real quick. Okay, the first item which was vetoed is the fifty thousand dollar two-hundred line item, which was nine-three-three-eight, okay? When you amended forty-dash-twelve, what you did is, is you went into that line that said fifty thousand two hundred dollars, and you changed that line to two hundred dollars. You made that amendment to the budget, and then you submitted the entire budget to the mayor. The mayor then exercised his line item veto. And as is, in accordance with the law, the result of that is, is that fifty thousand two hundred number, which had been changed to two hundred by you all, was then line item vetoed. What that means is, is there's zero dollars left in that. So if you look at all of nine-three-three-eight, nine-three-three-six, and nine-three-three-five, all of which were line item vetoed, those amounts in the budget, according to the defined law of what a veto is, destroys that fund entirely and takes it down to zero. So, your choice is here, if you're going to override the veto, you will have the monies that you amended into the budget. If you do not override the veto, those amounts equal zero. And as the law is also clear in this letter, legal memorandum, which I'll be happy to give you, enter it in for you guys here, is if you do not do that, all of the line items that were vetoed will amount to zero, and that money will remain unexpended, which means it cannot be touched. And the law is abundantly clear on this. I've never seen such a clear legal issue in my life, and there are two cases cited in here which are the seminal cases in Florida on this topic. So you have a very important decision here in front of you. And frankly, it doesn't bother me one way or the other. But if you do not override the veto, you will have a catastrophic effect on your budget of zeroing every single line item that was vetoed out. There is no ifs, ands, or buts about this. This is the way it is. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I did have a question for you, but counsel could come back at a later time with a supplemental budget resolution, is that right? And add that money in?
Yes.
Yes.
We can.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it's catastrophic then until you make a supplemental budget resolution. But it is pretty serious.
Okay, Ms. Myers.
I was just answering the question you asked.
Oh, okay.
That's the only way it can be put back in.
Okay.
Okay? I just wanted to clarify about that.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Ms. Debbie Kirby.
Debbie Kirby-Aseola. Thank you in advance for the opportunity to, excuse me, the opportunity to address you tonight. It is our system of government at its best that allows individual voices like mine now to be heard. You're poised to make history as you cast your vote to override the mayor's veto of an amendment tonight. In doing so, you are collectively representing the districts that elected you to this esteemed body. It is therefore incumbent upon you as a governing body to be the voices of the citizens of Pensacola. Those voices spoke loudly when they chose a new form of government with an empowered mayor at its helm. You are also each called upon individually to be the voices of your constituents. This privilege allows you the opportunity to make decisions through the voting process. The challenge of your decision is to put the best interests of the greater good before any personal interests. The citizens who voted you into office are listening to the outcome of these forthcoming issues. And while there is virtue in questioning and voicing opposition through the checks and balances process, there comes a time to let the majority prevail. After all, it is a system of government that works well for our country and will work well for our city. The majority spoke in two thousand and nine when they approved the new charter form of government, listened to those voices, both individually and collectively, before casting your vote tonight. The citizens have spoken. Please allow their voices to prevail. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Rachel Gillette. Welcome, Ms. Gillette.
Thank you, counsel, president. Thank you, council members. Thank you, mayor. My name is Rachel Gillette. I'm the director of Pensacola Young Professionals, and I also own my own business. I've been a resident of the city of Pensacola for ten years. And I'd like to thank you all for your service to the city of Pensacola. Being a public servant is a difficult job, and it's not something that I would like to do myself. It's impossible to please all of the people all of the time. But it is something that you have stepped up to do, to serve the people, and that's what this is about, service to the people of Pensacola. One of the things that Pensacola Young Professionals has been doing is a quality of life survey of this area, Escambia County and the city of Pensacola. The survey is carried out by Mason Dixon, an independent survey company, and they survey eight hundred registered voters by telephone, both landlines and mobile phones. The survey has produced a community report which will be published tomorrow, and I'll be happy to provide you all with copies of that. And the data in there, as I've said, is independent data from your registered voters. And I'd like to quote some of that now. Nine in ten voters say Pensacola is headed in the right direction. We've been doing the survey since two thousand and eight, and interestingly, that is a thirty-point increase since two thousand and ten. That was when the new change of government happened and the mayor was elected. Seventy-one percent of voters say that the charter and the strong mayor form of government will improve the city's economy and services. Eighty-seven percent of city voters say they are familiar and confident in the vision, plans, and leadership for the revitalization of Pensacola. And seventy-six percent give Mayor Hayward a positive approval rating. All of those statistics are from your registered voters. So now is the time for unity, not division. Now is the time to capitalize upon the successes that we've already seen happening in the last few years. Now is the time to put aside your individual differences and to work together for those people, for the people of this city, and for the people who believe in this city, and for the people that you serve. I would ask you to consider that instead of your own individual thoughts and feelings, and to step up as true leaders. And I'd ask you to uphold Mayor Hayward's veto. Thank you for your time and for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Gillette. Mr. Gary Sanson.
Gary Sanson, fifteen seventeen East Jackson, citizen of the city and the county. You know, that's the city. I don't call it a city. I call it paradise. I hadn't heard anyone's, well... This is a wonderful city, and some of us love it and would fight and die for it. I might be one of those. It has not stayed stagnant. Our quality of life is probably one of the best in the world. Now, some of us have gone away, gone away to get education, gone away to pursue a job. You cannot, and no matter what city you live in, always find your right occupation there. You have to maybe pursue it even to another country or another city.
You need to speak to the veto.
Well, the idea is, they're talking, when I hear them talk stagnation city, and we don't even need advertisement. We all, when people visit here, one-third of the county budget comes from tourists. They come here and love our place, love our culture, love our citizens. They're overwhelmed with how friendly our citizens are. It's just amazing. Now, what you people got to do, like I've been preaching for almost two years, is get, at my tongue, a staff. Now, I just marvel at Pensacola High and some of the students that come out of that school, from athletes to scholars. And these people...
Veto, please.
You think they can stay here, or do they have to go away?
Mr. Sanson.
But they all come back. Yes, sir.
Veto, to the veto.
To the veto. Put the money on your staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. John Leroy. Welcome, Mr. Leroy.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank the city council for allowing the public to speak in these issues. I would like to point out that three of the previous speakers that have spoken to you, I believe they had the word "young" in their organization's name. I don't meet that qualification. I came here in retirement, but my mother's family is from this place for a long time. My wife is a seventh-generation Pensacolaian. And what I have noticed recently is that there's something new in Pensacola that these folks are seeing and are delighting in. There's a new breeze blowing. There's a new fresh wind blowing in Pensacola. And that fresh wind came about not with the president, the mayor, but with the mayor's plan. Because as Mr. Reynolds most eloquently pointed out on Monday, Pensacola is going to have to grow in order to meet the financial needs that they have. And so, if, when you want to do that, when you want to achieve a goal, you have to have a plan, and the best thing to do is to ask some specialists, some experts who have experience in this sort of thing, how do I come up with a plan? And that's happened here. And that's what has got, I think, a vast majority of the citizens of Pensacola really energized about this city. And that's what the new wind is. And so, if you can't tell by now, I am speaking against, I am speaking against your overriding the veto. Because what the people in Pensacola want is a unified effort. We've got a guy, we've got a plan, and that plan seems to be working. And my feeling is, and I think most of the residents here, is that the city council has a choice here. They can back that plan, because I don't know of another plan. Or they can, the city council can make itself look like an obstructing force, like there are two, that there are two countervailing forces here. I think the city council has the opportunity to say, no, we may have differences. One of my concerns is that when the resolution that we're talking about, the original resolution, the amendment, was put forward, it wasn't put forward as a substantive plan of action. It was put forward as sending a message. Those are the words that were used. And I don't think that's the kind of legislation that you want to do. I don't think you want to spend your time legislating to send messages. So in order to assure the citizens of Pensacola that this fresh breeze is going to be supported by the city council, I am urging you to not overturn the veto. Speak with one voice, and let's go forward. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Jermaine Williams. Let's hold comments down, you know, reaction to a minimum, please. I understand some enthusiasm from both sides. Yes, sir?
Just thank you all again for letting me come back up here. How you doing, Mr. Mayor? Good to see you. My thing is, on the veto, I keep hearing everybody keep saying, "Growing Pensacola, growing Pensacola." I mean, how? We can't afford another Aragon Court, because, and I do understand, I think you all agree, it's some nice real estate, some nice stuff that y'all want that's up or downtown, that's surrounded by some bad areas. So we can't do another Aragon Court. Now, we're ready this time, if it happens. And so, I just don't, either way, it doesn't even matter. I just, I want, you're talking about Pensacola has so much to offer. Which Pensacola are we talking about? Because there are two Pensacolas. It's the one where I'm from and the one that, where y'all live, where y'all from. So like I said before, said early, you know, I mean, we really would like y'all help, especially you, Mr. Mayor. We haven't seen you since election time. Like I said, good to see you, man.
Okay, Ms. Myers.
Yes, I just wanted to thank you for coming back up and speaking, and you, sir. Yes. And I share your concerns about neighborhoods that have not been attended to. I feel like I live in one of those neighborhoods. And I'll speak more to that when we address, when the council actually addresses this veto issue.
Yes, ma'am. And Mr. Gerald, I understand you had something to say when I walked out?
Yes, I did, and I did turn my light on, Mr. President. Is it okay?
Yes, sir.
If you speak at this time?
Yes, sir. If you would, please.
Yes, I wanted you to know, Mr. Williams, that you and I have talked on several occasions, and in fact, you participated in our, a couple of our stop violence rally, and you will be invited to speak at the ones that we have planned.
Thank you.
But the comments that I made earlier was that I believe that the, the actions, the being proactive in law enforcement and so forth is a kind of a limited opportunity. But we want to continue our efforts to get the message to the individuals who are committing the crimes. That's, that's where we really need a lot of help. If, if they would change their mind behave, their mindset and behavior, they could help us reduce the crimes that we have in the neighborhoods.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, not to mean to cut you off. It's, it's a lot of people like me that's willing to do something. You know, that's no snitching, it's, it's a myth. Just like we don't vote, that's a myth that some of y'all assume and find out. And the thing that I'm saying is, we pay taxes, and we like to feel safe. Now, if we...
Sir, and we need to stay on the veto. It was my bad for letting Mr. Gerald talk off topic a little bit.
It's all good.
Okay. All right, thank you. Ms. Dubuson. I'll, I'll get you in a moment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, Council, and good evening, Mr. Mayor. I, I really was gonna try not to speak because I believe you, you folks heard me on Monday. But I, I've heard several things raised this evening, and I would just like for you to recognize, I continuously speak out on authenticity and process. And I believe the conflict that we're facing right now is about authenticity, authenticity of message, authenticity of purpose, and authenticity of process. I have no doubt that the Zimmerman Agency is an excellent agency. I have no doubt that they can do a fine job of PR and spinning the city whatever way we decide we want it to be spent. That, however, is not my preference. My preference is that Pensacola is recognized in its authenticity. We are a very diverse community with some wonderful successes and some failures that we need to address. But if we have to highlight our successes by rating those who are making the successes happen, be solo, we have lost our soul as a community. Because we survive as a community because forces came together. They came together when DeLuna was here, they came together when Galvez returned, and they are here now, as the young, new people are here, and those older of us who have transplanted here, and those of you who have been here forever. We are a united city. We just are having a dialogue that's a very difficult dialogue because we are coming at it from many different layers of resource. I sat this afternoon in hearing conversations about what this community wants to do with free money that they believe we're going to get from BP with this new claims fifty-seven million dollars. And it went through my mind that the two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars that we're being moved from Zimmerman in the budget could have been reclaimed by the city in a grant request for a half million dollars if they had put that as a top priority through the CRA or the city itself. Instead, we're going to be putting statues and festivals together. That is the kind of thinking that I would like to see Mr. Mayor and his staff redo. And the message that was asked on Monday was to say, the priority needs to be about the real needs of this community, the safety of those citizens who do not feel they can walk home. I walk from this space to my home every night, and I have people stop and tell me, you shouldn't be doing this. I don't want them to have to say that. I want Spring Street to be safe. I want Pace Street to be safe. I want every inch of this community to have the same safety factor, to have the same beauty factor, to have the same opportunity for good quality citizenship. We, as a community, have some major, major problems that are a result of maturing and a result of the economies of our time. And if we're gonna spend all of our time and energy trying to make ourselves look good instead of making ourselves correct those things, we're wasting our money. And that is the message that I supported when I said what I did on Monday, and that is what I hope you, as a council, will continue to say. We need the money put into our police force, we need the money put into administrative assistance so that you folks can be properly educated, so that when a question comes up before you, you're not saying, "I wish I knew something about this," and Mr. Messer or Mr. Reynolds are not saying, "I'll get back to you." And three months later, you folks may bring it back up to the table. We need a staff that works with you and gets you informed so that you can act as aggressively as our mayor needs for you to act, and that's when you will get together. I don't believe you folks are really opposed to what the mayor is wanting to do for this community, and I don't think that the mayor disrespects you as much as been pictured. I urge you to look at the message, but also the actions that that message will occur. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, unless there's a question that's addressed directly to you by, by council member, I'm gonna limit you to two times, just as I will all the council members on speaking. Do you want to speak right now?
Yeah, I wanna speak right now.
Okay.
First, it's fabulous to see everyone in the audience tonight, and this is a great city, and we are doing great things, and all of you are contributing to our success. We've been in office a little over twenty months. It has definitely been a culture shock for many people with the new form of government and what we're doing in this city. But I can tell you, communities across America are suffering, and they're trying to succeed and do what they can to grow out of this recession. We have incredibly nine council members up here that are very intelligent, very smart. They care about the community as much as I care about the community. We don't always get along, we always don't see eye to eye. I'm the first to admit that. However, I'm motivated every morning to move our city. This morning, my day started bright and early, like all of yours started off. I went to Seneca Heights Elementary, I walked a, a little girl to school with her mother to look at what we needed to do in, in Dr. Wu's district, in District One. And then my day began, and the meetings after meetings, talking about public safety. I met with Judge Casey Rogers today about a program that we're working with Chip Simmons about having ex-cons help us keep our streets safe. I'm doing all these things, the new form of government, that I'm supposed to do as the executive of the government. I'm here tonight to ask all of you to uphold the veto. I know Ms. Myers made a few comments earlier about that she wasn't invited to the meeting yesterday. The meeting was about people that consistently have supported what we're doing, and she mentioned something about women. I have three sisters, I have a mother with two sisters, I have a wife that's very strong, that's very independent. And I support women, just so you know. And Ms. Myers and I always have a fabulous conversation. When I see her in public, and we had one yesterday, she complimented my parents and said how great my parents are, so I appreciate that, Sherri. But listen, I'm here to do the work of the city, I care about the city, I burn Pensacola every single day because I know we can be great. And I wanna work with these council members, and I think they do know that, and I think the majority knows that. Martin Dewish, fabulous council president, friend of mine, I haven't spoken with him in a while, but, um, listen, you know, I'm all about making our city successful, and I'm all about the Zimmerman Agency and the ad budget helping us grow the city. I don't think we need to overthink it, I think it's time to get to work, and I think everyone in this audience wants us to get to work. I know they want me to get to work, I know they want the nine council members to get to work. I'm committed to these council members, and most importantly, I'm committed to all of you in the audience, and the citizens at home listening, and the taxpayers, because we're employees of the taxpayers. So I hope you know I all, you know, respect you, and I do like all of you. So I'm asking you to uphold my veto. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I, I know everybody on council is gonna wanna make some sort of comments, so I'm just gonna start down here with Dr. Pratt and move this way.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I was gonna hear what some others said, but I'll, I'll go ahead, I'm, I'm prepared with my thoughts for tonight. I wanna start...
Just one moment, please. What I do wanna do, though, is I wanna ask the clerk to, this is what our rules say, is to have Ms. Allen put five minutes on the clock for, for each council member, okay? Thank you.
So, on Monday, we heard from a speaker who suggested that if the council successfully overrides the mayor's veto, it's a declaration of war. And, and that really threw me. I, I, I completely disagree with that. Yep. If a legislative body sets a policy position and the executive disagrees, that's democracy, not manufacturing controversy or petty squabbling. That's just how this works. When the executive vetoes something, and it's not really an affront, it's democracy. Our charter gives us that structure. It's, it's what the citizens voted for with this charter. Then if the legislative body overrides the veto, it's not a declaration of war, it's just democracy. You know, the only time in U.S. history that disagreements in the legislature and, and government resulted in war was the Civil War. And I used to always puzzle when I was a kid, why didn't the union just say, "Forget them, I don't need to deal with people with whom I disagree?" And it sort of summed up with the, the comments that, that they were working to ensure that a government by the people, for the people, and of the people shall not perish from the earth. You know, that, you know, if every disagreement is war, democracy doesn't work. And so I'm speaking tonight, not against the mayor, not against the charter, which gives us the power to have this debate tonight anyway, not against the opinion of other council members or the citizens who spoke. I'm speaking in support of a policy decision that this council made two weeks ago when we were discussing the budget. You know, I've heard more criticism in this community about this branding effort than about any other issue that, that's come before us. The cost, which is one-point-two-million dollars, is a whole lot more than people think we should be spending. The look, the, the waves of Pensacola Bay, the slogan, why do we have to put the rest of Florida down just to make ourselves look better? And then the approach, why, why should we be going it alone? Why are the taxpayers of, of the city footing the bill for this whole community? Someone mentioned the chamber luncheon today. The chamber's doing a great job promoting the city. Why aren't we, instead of going it alone, working with the chamber? But I know you guys have heard all these complaints. So we went through the budget process. We did what the charter told us we had to do. We came together, took ownership of this budget, and we saw an expenditure request from the mayor to market not really just our city, but CEO marketing, and we said, "No." We passed a budget that reflected the council's policy priorities for the coming year. It's a good budget. It, I'm proud of the work, I'm proud of our open dialogue on it. Now, some, some have questioned the legality of the mayor's veto. But instead of setting lawyers at each other, I think we should just do our job in a few weeks and say, "Let's define how this, this government works. How do we expect vetoes to work?" As a policymaking body of this government, that's our responsibility, it's not the responsibility of the courts. So today, let's set aside the technicalities about the legal issues, and let's override the intent of his veto, his desire to continue using taxpayer money for self-promotion for an ad campaign that duplicates the efforts of our partners in this community. I urge the council to reaffirm our policy decision from two weeks ago regarding the successive expenditure on advertising and override the veto. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Dr. Wu.
I'm right now.
Okay. Mr. Spencer.
I intend to, to vote against the, against the override of the veto, and I hope that it is, it is understood to be clear evidence of my support of the mayor's strategy. For me, this is about timing. I think it is highly premature for us to step in at this twenty-month period and effectively say, "We want to tell the mayor how to promote Pensacola." I think Mayor Hayward deserves to direct and manage his strategy, and that does not prevent us in the near future from having the opportunity to receive community input. We can evaluate ourselves. As council members, we'll have measurables to step back and evaluate the mayor's strategy. But I strongly feel, as I said, it's highly premature to disallow the mayor to promote and sell Pensacola in the manner that he deems to be the most effective.
Okay. Mr. Johnson.
I'll hold my comments till later. I would like to reserve that right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Yes, certainly. Mr. Kimbrel.
Thank you, Council, Council President, Mayor. I, as well, did not wanna get up and speak here tonight, but kinda felt compelled to after hearing everyone else speak. It seemed a lot of well-to-do people, so I figured there needed to be a few more of us poor people that get up and speak on behalf of this subject. I'm gonna disagree with some people as far as the Zimmerman Agency goes. I do not have faith in them. I've been watching the scandals in Ocaloosa County with them and some of the other things that have been going on with that corporation. It concerns me. I don't like that Pensacola's getting into bed with them. I also would have to say that as far as Councilman Spencer goes, let's be honest, you support the mayor because it's financially viable for you to do so. Yeah, and I'm not trying to be insulting.
Let's, let's keep the personalities out of it.
It's, it's just a fact. You know, I've, I've been paying close attention to what's going on in the city. You know, and, you know, I, I've been watching, the people are watching. I do think y'all need to override the mayor's veto. I think y'all's budget was very, very good, and it did compromise, and by the mayor vetoing it, it was him being uncompromising. And I've been seeing a lot of that going on since he's taken over office, and we did ask for a strong mayor, but we did not ask for a dictatorship. I would like to see him working closely with the council and not solely by himself. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, the, I was identified as the, by the news journal, by the way, that I am the swing vote. And I don't know what I did to achieve that distinct honor. But I can tell you that I am significantly pleased as to where I see this city's going. And I am not going to be a barrier to that. There are some things that, that I, I don't like, and I hope, hopefully, those things that I don't like, they will be improved, and, and we can get on about the business of improving the quality of life for all of our citizens, not only just on one side, but totally, the complete city, where we can walk with pride, walk home safely, don't have to lock your doors, have jobs for our children when they go off to college, respect for each other. And I think we're heading that way. So I'm, I'm not going to vote to override the veto. I'm not gonna be a barrier. I, I wanna see this city continue, and hopefully, it will. If it doesn't work, we'll know. I guarantee you, we will know. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Gerald, this will be your second time.
This is my first time. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, you, you spoke after Mr. Williams.
Oh, yes, yes, that was about something else. But at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. President, you indicated if someone had already said what you were thinking, then you would just say what he said, and we move forward.
Yes, sir. Ms. Myers.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, and before you, before you begin, you know, if there's somebody that really wants to speak for a third time, feel compelled to do it, council can waive the rules for that individual and allow them another opportunity. So I don't, don't think that just because we've had, you've had two terms, that it, that it's over. Just ask for council to waive the rules. Ms. Myers.
First, first of all, I want to thank the mayor for being here. I'm always delighted when I'm in his presence. We have great conversations. I could give you a laundry list of his accomplishments, especially his first year in office. For instance, one thing that's very dear to my heart, as everyone knows, is access for people with disabilities. This mayor did something no council had ever done before, and that was to allocate a large sum of money for ADA improvements to our parks.
Ms. Myers, though, I, I'm gonna have to have you speak to...
Well, I'm speaking to the, to, to why I am taking the action I'm taking. It has nothing to do with the mayor, and please let, let me say this the way I, I feel like saying it. saying it. He has accomplished a lot. However, if you look at the totality of these funds, we're talking about $225. And as Mr. Mark Taylor so well pointed out, we passed over 99% of what the mayor proposed for the budget. We left approximately 80% of the funds he wanted for marketing. And I would like to point out that the mayor's office has an operating budget three times that of city council, and the city council is the governing body. It's right there in the charter. I voted for the charter, and a lot of you did, and I've read the charter, and that's what it says, that this city council is the governing body. And the reason that I recommended taking these funds out of the line items that they were taken from is to put money into the city council's budget to try to help us get staff and other resources that we need. Today, I got a memo from the city attorney telling us that he has a conflict of interest in terms of giving legal opinions that may affect the mayor or the city council, and that comes up frequently. That means, at this point, the city council doesn't have an attorney, the mayor does, we don't, to give us legal advice. So, the memo that I got today from the city attorney just makes the case as to why the city council needs this $225, and it's a drop in the bucket when you consider that we have approved almost 100% of the mayor's budget, and I was glad to approve that. Now, I do have some problems with the...not the Zimmerman Agency, but the way the money's been used, because some of it is not being used to promote one of our most valuable economic development resources, and that's uptown Pensacola. And so, that troubles me, but that was not my motivation in making the suggestions as to moving this minute amount of money in the overall scheme of things. Now, Councilwoman Pratt said that the legal issues should...were not that significant, but they actually are, because I've read the law regarding line item vetoes. And I have the law here before me. I've read the cases that Mr. McKenzie cited, and if we don't override the veto, that leaves zero in the various line items. And the only way...the mayor does not have the authority to put those funds back in. He just doesn't have it under Florida Supreme Court law. And so, the only way they can go back in is through a supplemental appropriations process. So, I don't want you to think that if this...if you don't override this veto, these line items are zeroed out, and that's where we stand.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Myers. Mr. Dewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, oh my, the distance that we have traveled in the past week and a half. First, I'd like to thank our mayor for attending tonight and coming to hear from the citizens that have come and passionately spoken how they feel, and for deliberating with council, your fellow elected officials. I'm very proud that you're here tonight. And I would like to say how proud I am of the citizens for being here, too. I only wish you had been engaged more in the process and been here on September 12th, when we were actually considering these items that were in the proposed budget. When I saw the veto, I fully expected it. I actually told Ms. Myers, "There will be a veto." That's the process. That's what Dr. Pratt talked about. It's not conflict. It's not war. It's not disrespectful or combative. It is normal in the federal government. At the state level, they articulate it the exact same way, that the normal step in the process is to deliberate and adjust that budget. 99.8%, thank you, Mr. Taylor, for bringing that up. That's incredible. I would just be thrilled if it was my budget that had been approved at that level. But I started to get concerned when I heard the interpretation of a line item reversal or this opportunity that it reverses the entire action of council. And I'm not gonna go into a long commentary, since I only have five minutes, but back to the Roman veto, the intercession and protecting the plebes, the public. Veto is a negative action. It is a removal of an item. It is not a reversal of an entire process. There was a separate vote on the 12th that removed these advertising dollars from the budget. They're gone. If council will remember, I asked twice about the options and the opportunities of the mayor or this council to do supplemental budget resolutions on October 1st, depending on how the votes had gone. If you'll remember, I had a motion on the floor to remove the entire Zimmerman Agency budget, to have that be a separate vote of council, as it should have been. That is a wholesale rebranding of our city, 453 years of history, five flags, and being rebranded should have been a separate vote. It was not, and it was included, but...and I withdrew that, because that was not something that we considered. We were very proud of our votes on the 12th, but those were the votes before the actual budget, the amended final budget was voted on. There is not a reversal. I looked it up. There's nowhere...no case law that cites this miraculous reversal of our action. There is a veto zeroing out these items. So, the intent of this is, okay, if the mayor cannot have it in the advertising budget, that was taken away and taken out. The veto is saying, "Okay, I want it returned to fund balance. Council will not have it either." I understand that, and I respect that. And half of me says, "Let the mayor have his veto tonight." But at the same time, I stand with council. I think we've come a long way in creating a dialogue and a very minute and very small budget process. I mean, this should be months-long. This should be deliberative with the citizens and with council and with the mayor. We have a few minutes, I think 30 minutes, the very first year to discuss the budget, and nothing this year, one-on-one. We had our requests to the mayor, which was a conversation, but never a response. So, I support this because I support council. I support the budget process. I am not voting against the mayor. I am not voting against progress. I am simply supporting our charter as it stated. And the one thing I want to make certain that council, I turn to my honorable colleagues, there was one piece of paper provided to us today, and it was the mayor's actions, his veto, and it articulates it exactly as it was stated and that was exercised. That is all that we can discuss. It is the only legal document. There has been 10 different ideas of how this is to be done and what is interpreted to be taking action on, but none of them carry weight. The charter speaks to what a line item veto is, or if there was a package veto, the mayor could have said, "I, you know, veto the whole budget." He did not. This is the action that was taken. So, any possibility for reversing does not exist. Mr. McKenzie made that completely clear to us, and I hope the council heard that. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Wu.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was gonna remain quiet, but I'm gonna explain why I'm gonna vote the way that I'm going to vote. But before I give the explanation on how I vote, I want the viewing public and the people in the audience to realize that all of us sit here, and we do a very difficult job. We have to vote either yes or no on every single item. There's some items you feel 100% about. There's some items you only feel 50% about, but you still have to push the button. So, regardless of how each individual council member votes up here, I hope that the audience will give them the freedom to realize that they're doing the best they can and as honestly as they know how to do it. Just because we disagree on how you should take a stand on an item does not make us mortal enemies of one another. Having said that, those of y'all that knew me, that know me, know that of all the people that fought the new form of government, I probably was right close to the front. But as I have said on many occasions, my philosophy is, you fight till the time a vote is taken, and once that vote is taken, you do the will of the people. You don't sit there and say, "Well, I don't know, but I only like 50% or 45% of what the people do." People speak. You do what the people say. Now, I may see things differently than anybody else, and if somebody sees it differently, that's okay, too. But the way I see the vote for the new charter is that the people of this city said they wanted one person to be the point person to lead us to a new tomorrow. They wanted one person that, at the end of the day, if something wasn't done, people could point to and say, "We gave you the job, and we expect you to do it, and either you did or you did not do it." Having said that, and I want to thank the mayor for being here tonight. It's good to have you, Mr. Mayor. Having said that, his responsibility is to lead us. May not necessarily like the way he is leading us, but that's the charge we've given him. And the reason that I feel that he should have all the money that he needs to lead is I've heard him say he needed that money. So, number one, if he's put in a position to lead us, if he's sitting there telling us he needs this money to get accomplished what he needs to do...and again, I cannot speak to any of my colleagues, but for myself, my obligation is to give him what he needs to do to get the job done. Now, some people may agree with it. Some people may not. But that's the beauty of our democracy, is that we can disagree with one another, and at the end of the day, we don't shoot each other. But in my mind, the people said they wanted a strong mayor, and there's a gentleman that writes in a blog, and I know he doesn't use his right name, and I know who he is. And he says, "There's nowhere about a strong mayor." And I tell you to go to Wikipedia, look up "strong mayor," and you'll see it's exactly what we have. We have an executive branch, and we have a legislative branch. So, again, in closing, I am going to support the veto. But I also implore all of y'all that are sitting there and all of y'all that are watching to realize that this is a difficult job, and I ask you to have compassion among my fellow council members, because they're doing it the best way they know how. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Mr. Dewis, Mr. Mayor, I see both of you have your lights on. I'm gonna give Mr. Johnson an opportunity to speak if he wants to. You've not spoken yet.
Can I hold my comments, please?
You certainly can.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, this will be your second time.
I'll go ahead and speak one more time. Again, I just want to stress how much I value all the people in the audience that are speaking and telling what they care about and what's important to the city, because we know what's important. We provide services to the taxpayer. We fight crime. We have a lot more that we can do to clean up our streets, to take care of our sidewalks, to pick up the sanitation. We provide services to the taxpayers. But what we also do, as leaders, as council members, and as the mayor, is we create the environment for people to want to move to Pensacola, do business with Pensacola, and make it easier to do business in Pensacola. And I just want to tell the council members one more time. I respect all of you, all of your opinions. I'm a big boy. It's either thumbs up, thumbs down. The office of the mayor has changed, the executive forum, it has changed. So, my duties are different than the council members' duties. They're responsible for their districts and what their citizens in their districts want, and we're supposed to get it done for them. So, again, I value your opinion. I respect your opinion. As I stated, you're all bright. We know that. But it's time to move Pensacola forward. We've lagged far too behind Northwest Florida and the rest of Florida. So, it's our job to let people know where we are, what we're doing, and we have a great city. We have great people. A healthy debate is great. I welcome it every time. Like I said, I'm not gonna win every battle. I don't even plan to win every battle. So, again, we can save time and, you know, say what we think, and then thumbs up, thumbs down. So, again, thank you for your evening, and thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Dewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I failed to read something into the record earlier when I finished my thoughts. In the event that this does not pass tonight, and I can count the votes, so I need to read this in the record, my concern is that it be abundantly clear about what a line item veto actually accomplishes, and that the original vote to amend those advertising dollars removed them from the budget, and then a final budget was voted on, and that any appropriation of those previously requested funds for advertising will be an illegal appropriation of public funds. They are not approved in this budget. They are not available to veto out. I want to make that clear. And only a judge would be able to clear up that situation if that were to occur. A supplemental budget resolution on October 1st is the only way to reappropriate those advertising dollars. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Myers, you have already spoken twice. What I'm gonna ask you to do, and our rules do allow this, because you're the one that made the motion, is you get to back cleanup on speaking. So, I'm gonna ask you just to reserve your remarks right now, and again, give Mr. Johnson a chance.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll go ahead and speak, and I'll make it very short. I appreciate this very healthy debate that we've had. I've heard everyone. One lady that spoke, I know, has criticized this council. I Googled her, hear her say, and read the comments about the council. And, you know, that's what America's about. That's what democracy's about, being able to speak your mind and not be shot in the back of the head for what you said. And I welcome the healthy debate. I've heard this. I had made my mind up as how I was gonna vote tonight. I think that the mayor's heard us. I appreciate him showing up tonight and hearing this healthy debate. But I just hope that we all show each other respect. It is a difficult job. I heard Dr. Wu's comments. It's a very difficult job. Sometimes I only vote some way because I feel that 51% of me tells me that's the right way to vote. The other 49% of me wants me to vote a different way. So, it's a difficult job, and I just hope that we all treat each other with respect. And thanks, everyone, for coming down tonight, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for showing up, too. That's all my remarks today. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wants to speak for a second time? Okay. Ms. Myers, you're it.
Okay. I just want to, again, summarize that these funds cannot be appropriated by the mayor. There has to be a supplemental budget resolution, and that any appropriation of these funds would be illegal. And if the mayor wants these funds or any portion of them back into the line items they were in, we will have to have a supplemental resolution. At that time, we would be able to have a conversation again about the mayor's...that portion of the mayor's budget and also what the council needs. Maybe we could compromise some way. So, I'm looking forward to that discussion, if that occurs, and I may be able to meet the mayor somewhere in the middle. But anyway, Councilwoman Dewis has said, "As long as it's in Uptown." So, those are my final remarks, and thank you for attending this meeting, expressing your views, and I'm looking forward to having continued healthy debates. I think this has been a healthy process for the council and for the mayor's office.
Okay. Well, we're ready to vote. Let me just restate the motion that, Ms. Myers, it moved that this council override the veto of Mayor Ashton Hayward. And so, a yes vote will be to override the veto, and a no vote will be to support the mayor's position. mayor's position, to support the veto itself. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. Yes to override, no to support the veto. Please vote. Okay, and that passes on a three to six, I mean, that fails on a three to six vote. Okay, thank you. Now, I need to ask both the public and counsel to indulge me here for a moment. Mr. Spencer, would you move for a 10-minute recess? I've got some turnover I need to do with Mr. Townsend.
Certainly, I move that we take a 10-minute recess and reconvene.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, please vote. Yes, well, let's just make it 7:30, okay?
Stating that motion to read that we resume at 7:30.
Okay, thank you. Please vote. Okay, that passes, you know, it's like, thank you, everybody.
Mr. President?
I can't wear heels in my bag.
I've got to go.
So that's it.
You're going.
Have you found anything?
Ms. Burnett, could you come over and counsel Mr. Townsend, please?
I don't wear heels.
Well, I was like, "Sir, how are this?"
Half since the sales tax has been down and communication service tax is continuing to be down. These are all down still after we adjusted the budget downward in June. In total, all of those equal about $232,000 that were down. And looking at the budget and where we are on expenditures, it's anticipated that there will be sufficient expenditure savings in order to offset the down in revenue today. Local option sales tax is down .64. That was not adjusted in June, so that's an annual figure where we started. A local option gasoline tax was adjusted downward and showed some upward trend since June. The balance of your tree planting trust fund is 674,510, and the park purchases trust fund is 38,068. Of course, we're still working on the pension issues. The council is dealt with the ASME and the general pension. There's ordinance tonight on second reading for council to take action on. And then we still have the union agreements with the police and fire departments that are still ongoing. And then the debts and expenditures for contracts over 25,000 that were approved, Hub, City Ford, there were three CNG vehicles that were purchased for the police department at a total price of 80,070. Events, Control Concepts, a two-year contract for monitoring service, and that total was Bodark Books for the library, $45,000. Midwest Tape for DVDs and CDs for the library system of 31,500. M&amp;H Construction Services, which is an SBE, in the total of 54,962. Roper and Roper General Contractors, which is Phase Two of the 2002 street and sidewalk construction, is 51,300. There were no state, federal, or other buying contracts that were purchased since the last time I reported. And with that, that's the end of my monthly financial report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire Marshal David Allen? He has an announcement for us?
Good evening, members of council and Mayor Hayward. Thank you for having me down. I just, it just dawned on me before the meeting that this is the last meeting before this year's fifth annual Community Public Safety Day that will be held at Pensacola State College as it was the last two years. And I just want to make sure that all of y'all were invited and all the public was invited. It is a free event, free to everyone. It's, there's free parking, there are live demonstrations, there will be up to 23 different public safety agencies to include law enforcement, EMS, Coast Guard, Marine Patrol, fire departments, basically anyone that would respond to a 911 call for any type of emergency from forestry, and all of them will be present showing their equipment, personnel that will be there to talk to, the equipment to touch, feel, climb on, take pictures, and then live demonstrations. There will actually be live fire demonstrations, Jaws of Life demonstrations, and you will be able to go up in the ladder truck as we have in the years past. Helicopters will be on site. So it's just a really great event. It's the fifth year we've had this, and I just want to be sure that everyone knows they're invited. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Counsel, just a minute. Councilwoman Dewise, you-
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just wanted to thank Chief Allen and all of the public safety men and women in our community for putting this on. Anyone that has kids knows that it's hard to keep their attention, but this day is a wonderful event that you put on. I mean, there is the helicopter that comes and rescues someone, and the car's on fire, and the crash and the bang and the firefights, and, I mean, it is a busy thing, but it also teaches them that you're working in those environments on a daily basis, and they have a better understanding of what it takes to keep our city safe. And I really appreciate you, and I'm still trying to rearrange my schedule to be there. I've been there all four years, so I hope to make it a fan.
And I just remembered, I need to remind everybody it's October 6th, Pensacola State College Main Campus from 9 until 1. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Mr. Mayor?
City Administrator, Mr. Bill Reynolds, talk about our green report.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm delighted to get this to you this week. This is our Pensacola Green Report. It's a Green Initiative 2012 annual report. It's the first annual report, and we're looking forward to what we can add to it in the near future as we continue our efforts in making this city more green and more sustainable. It will be online as well, and I believe that copies have been provided for council. But just to kind of give you a real quick rundown of some of the things that you're going to find in there, and it actually is a great summation of the successes that this organization has had in the last year. We talk about Pensacola Energy, their transition to natural gas vehicles, and also their energy rebate program. Great analysis of the main library renovation and some of the awards that it received. We describe our process for our energy audit, which is coming up. Our Port of Pensacola projects, especially our shore power projects there, recycling and trash collection efforts in the cities, and some of the changes that we've had in the last year there. The mayor's neighborhood cleanup program, and a great analysis of what we've been doing with that. And again, you really got to give a special shout out to the sanitation department for the work that they do there. The Green Building Ordinance, which was passed by council a couple of months ago, the Complete Streets Program, which is, was also passed by council and which Councilwoman Pratt has been spearheading the effort where we go with that in the future. And the last thing I'll touch on, but certainly not the last thing that's in the report, but it talks about the Admiral Mason Park and how a simple stormwater project became a Florida award winner and something that this community can certainly be proud of. So I urge you to take a look online, and it will be there if it's not already there. It will be there tomorrow morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Bill.
Councilwoman Mars?
Yes, I'm just delighted with this report. And the Environmental Advisory Board met Wednesday and started doing an inventory of all of the things the city is doing that could get us points toward getting some type of recognition from the Florida Green Building Coalition. And we were all pretty amazed at how far along we've come. You know, when we really sit down and take an inventory, it's just pretty amazing, the things that we're doing and how much we've accomplished, and we can go further just doing some simple and inexpensive things. But I think this is the first report of this kind that I've seen here. I think it's great, and I want to thank you for getting this accomplished. It's very impressive.
Thank you, and thank you, council.
Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
No, sir.
Thank you so much. Okay, council communication.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and I'll follow, good follow-up to the green report. I was going to give you guys an update of where the Complete Streets Committee is. Tomorrow, we will be meeting at 9:00 a.m. to approve a survey instrument to send out to citizens to get their input on where they'd like to see improvements in our city. We can't be everywhere, so we're looking forward to a lot of feedback from them, and I'm encouraging council to consider emailing their lists and reaching out to those that they've contacted over the years. And we're going to work with CNAP to get neighborhoods to give feedback, the PTAs at schools, other groups. And so if there's anybody who wants to find out about it, it'll also be on the city website in some form or another where they can contact any of the council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Myers?
Yes, I just have a couple of things. I just wanted to let Mr. Reynolds know that I went out to Dunmire Wood today, and it really does look beautiful. The citizens have wanted some beautification and cleanup efforts done out there in this beautiful wooded park. And they identified some trees that needed to be cut down. Some were dead, and some needed to be removed in order to let sunlight into the park. And I went out there today. Everything from the storms this summer had been cleaned up, and it is just a really much more pleasant park now. And we hope to continue making improvements to that park. And I've offered to use some of the discretionary funds I have to work with the city to get some bench improvements out there. But I just wanted to let Mr. Reynolds know that I did go out there, and everything looks really good. Also wanted to let you know that I met with some guests through our Gulf Coast Diplomacy Council this week from Honduras. And the two individuals, there were four individuals from Honduras. Two of them were blind, and they were accompanied by people who were assisting them. And I was very impressed with the group. I felt very inadequate in terms of being an ambassador for the city because I always judge my performance next to Councilwoman Dewise, who does a great job of talking about the history of Pensacola and welcoming our guests from other countries. But the individuals who were here were interested in the Americans with Disabilities Act and our various state, local, and federal laws. They spent a lot of time at the Center for Independent Living Disability Resource Center looking at some of the assistive technology that one of our employees uses, who is also blind. But I took them around the building, this building, and talked to them about the ADA features here in this building, and like the signage next to all of the doors in the building has raised numbers and also braille, just to, and they were really interested in seeing these types of designs in the built environment that we have in this country. So I always learn a lot from people from other countries. It's a very gratifying opportunity for me personally. This particular group of people were extremely well-informed. They ask a lot of questions, and so I think that the Gulf Coast Diplomacy Council is just an incredible organization, and it provides our city with a great opportunity to meet with people from all over the world and to make friends with people. I always remember everyone I meet from other countries when I participate in this, and I'm just really honored to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gerald?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and this is basically an announcement. Booker T. Washington High School this year, Booker T., the original Booker T. Washington High School was built in 1912. This is the 100th year celebration of Booker T. Washington High School. Several events have been planned to acknowledge and to celebrate this important date, and if you need information, feel free to call Dr. Marion Williams or Mr. Walter Gully. And they have the calendar of events, and I won't go over that entire calendar this evening, but the celebration is taking off. And as I said, if you need information, feel free to contact Mr., rather, Dr. Marion Williams or Mr. Walter Gully, who is on the faculty at Booker T. Washington High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dewise?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and I just wanted to make residents of District Three aware of, at least a small portion of District Three, of the mayor's cleanup this weekend. The boundaries are starting at Summit Boulevard and basically going up Spanish Trail and on the west side into the airport property. So it's those small little neighborhoods along there. And you can begin to put your stuff out starting tomorrow. It will be picked up. You need to have it out by 7:00 a.m. on Saturday. Please do not put propane tanks out as they could hurt the people that are picking the items up. No herbicides, no explosives, auto parts. Your yard trash needs to stay separate, and no building materials. But other than that, the old barbecue grills, anything in your garage that I didn't mention just now, and that's the location of it this weekend. And there's another portion as well. I'm not sure whose district it is, if someone else will be bringing it up. Yes. I'll leave that to Dr. Wu. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wu?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilwoman Dewise, because I don't have to read the list out now since you've already done that. Thank you so very much. Basically, for District One, a portion going up Ninth Avenue and reaching over to Creighton Road, coming back over to Spanish Trail and going down to Hidden Oak. There's a little section right there on Langley, north and south of Langley, that those of you all that get a postcard will notice that we'll not have pick up because those people are in the county. So I would like to encourage people who live in that area to take advantage of wonderful fire and police service we offer, but also events such as this, as the mayor's cleanup, neighborhood cleanup, because anything you can pull out there that's on the list that Councilwoman Dewise says, we will pick up and cart away for you. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Spencer?
Thank you. I share this with all council members so that they can perhaps respond to any inquiries from people that are observing with certainly great concern, observing the oak trees and all of the landscaping on Main Street. I'm happy to report that what I would like to do is provide our city clerk a copy of the letter that I was provided from Dr. Mac Thadford from University of Florida, horticulturist that is in Milton, at the West Florida Research and Education Center. He has provided a tremendous confidence-building, in-depth report that describes the characteristics of those trees, what we're seeing, what is expected in the, basically the bronze and sort of coloration. And his investigation gives me the confidence that those trees are, in spite of how they look right now, are all on the road to survival and healthy future. There were some adjustments that have been made, and I won't go into details, but they did have their share of shock to deal with in addition to transplanting. But the reason I share it, it's a corridor that's highly visible, and I just can't help but think that you have the responsibility and opportunity to assure citizens that that landscaping feature is not only on the road to recovery, but will be a great green belt. And I will provide that to the clerk or to Elaine and allow them to provide the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dewise.
Mr. Vice President, I just wanted to add to that really quickly because even the well-established heritage oaks on scenic highway are brown from the recent storm. It is a natural occurrence because of the salt air, and they rebound and reestablish themselves. So I know the little trees are in shock, but I just keep telling them it's okay when I drive by. We'll get there.
Thank you.
I want to remind the citizens that the seafood festival will be going on this weekend, and an opportunity to see the commercial that was on TV, and I almost wanted to eat the TV, that the shrimp and the lobsters were looking so good. So I encourage all of our citizens to do that. Councilwoman Myers?
Yes, I'm supposed to go there and read a proclamation, but I'm not sure what time.
If you would ask Elaine, I think she'll, she'll get the script.
I think that's in the afternoon.
Do I have the pardon?
Yeah, it's Friday sometime, so you might want to ask.
Yeah, that's tomorrow.
Yes, it is.
I prefer to start asking.
Okay. Elaine, the petitions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, now we'll go to the consent agenda. We have, these are items that will pass unanimously Monday. We're going to hold out 11B. We're voting on 11A, C, D, E, and F, and G, H, I, J. Regular motion.
Move the approval. Second.
Move it second. Comments from the audience? Councilwoman Dewise?
I'd like to hold item F and G.
Which one?
F and G. They were conditional on the attorney's response, and I believe the mayor's office has something to say.
F and G. Okay, council will be voting on A, C, D, E, H, and J. Please vote. Okay, it is approved unanimously. Okay, item 11B is an appointment to the Enterprise Zone Advisory Board, and we have a substitute motion that we need to make, and that the council appoint Thomas McCully, an Enterprise Zone area business owner for a four-year term, expiring September 30, 2016.
Move the approval.
Okay, could I get a-
Second.
-understanding on what that's done?
There was this.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Vice President, with that item, that was an error on my part, going through the board termination. I thought that there was a term for an at-large position, but there was not. That was an oversight on my part. I have contacted Ms. Gant, and she's looking at other upcoming term vacancies, so that's going to take care of it.
Thank you. Any other question? Please vote. Oh, Ms. Gerald?
Yes, well, actually, it's not a question, but I did receive a meeting schedule of the boards and commissions, and I was appalled at the fact that the Enterprise Zone Advisory Board hadn't met since 2008. So if they are going to be a board, then they need to be a board, or they could all just go home. But if they haven't met since 2008, then that's where the stagnation is within the growth of our enterprise zone. So I would strongly encourage them to get on the ball. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Please vote. Item F, Award of Bid Number 12-Q46, that's 2012 Street Reconstruction Project. Councilwoman Dewise?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. If council will recall, these were proposed and amended on Monday by council, I believe by unanimous vote. But what I had brought up was my concern about these two contracts because of the appearance of a conflict on the mayor's part, that he's actually business partners with both of these parties to these companies, and that I felt it incumbent on this council to ensure that that question, if there is a conflict, be cleared up before we award these contracts. I have no issue with the contracts being awarded. They're the low bidders. I know there were some comments in the community and frustration, and I never brought that up. My only concern is that we address that. And the other thing would be the 10% contingency, since it does not come back to council, and if this is deemed that there is not a conflict and we go forward with the contract, just for complete clarity, and so that the mayor cannot be called out for that, you know, awarding the 10%, that those come back to council. So I'll wait to hear from the mayor's office of what they will do to remedy the situation, and then I can make that motion at that time. Thank you.
Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Let me address the 10% contingency from the beginning. Every contingency approval has to go through me. And as, as Mr. Owens will tell you, I'm not very giving when it comes to contingencies because frankly, I think that if you're going to bid for a project, you need to investigate and determine what those contingencies are. So, you know, I take that job very seriously, and if something is approved, normally, I'm on the site getting an explanation from the individuals as to what's occurring with that.
Thank you.
So the problem with hamstringing the contingency is that there are times where, quite literally, because of time windows, time is of the essence, and to have to wait for a council meeting could be a problem. And so I hope, I hope that takes care of that issue. But, and by the way, those are always available anytime, if there's any questions about a particular contingency, you know, either myself or Mr. Owens will sit down and talk about those and address those.
Thank you.
So let's, let's talk about the bigger issue. As, as council is aware, Mr. Messer had determined that he, well, I guess, Mr. Messer didn't determine, I guess the Florida bar determined that Mr. Messer had a conflict because essentially he has two masters when it comes to these particular situations. So it then became incumbent upon me to take a look at the particular issues. So let me, let me kind of give you an outline of how I did it. First of all, there is no conflict. And I didn't just accept that from, you know, an initial look, and I didn't accept my own interpretation of the law, but essentially, what I did initially was take a look at the process, and then, more importantly, take a look at what the law is, and then, didn't rely upon my acumen when it comes to determining the law, but then we actually had it sent outside for a independent legal opinion. And by the way, these are getting expensive. If I can just say that, as someone who hates spending money, you know, I would love to get past the necessity of going out and getting independent legal opinions, about 2,500 bucks on this one. So let's start and take a look at the process itself. The process is actually controlled by two things, Florida statutes and our own code. Florida statutes are very clear when it comes to a, any project or contract for a project with more than $300,000, a municipality must competitively award. Well, what does competitively award mean? Essentially, that means you have multiple ways to get to that competitive award. The most secure, if you would, is what is called a secure bid, and that's, that's what we had here, a sealed bid, excuse me, the most secure, and this is a sealed bid. Then you have a request for proposals, then you have a request for qualifications, and then you have what's called competitive negotiations. So when you, when you think about it as levels of security, the most secure thing that you have are sealed bids. And why is that the most secure? Well, it's very simple, because if a company who has put a sealed bid on the table makes a determination as to what their bid is going to be, that is sealed, it is then brought forward, and then it's opened up, and if they have the lowest bid, they get the project. So essentially, what happens is that we start and notice, we put a notice out that we're going to have a project. We then make a determination, and as part of that, there, before I get to the determination, as part of that, what you have is a, a meeting that these individuals, if they want to bid, must attend. It's a mandatory bid meeting. They then prepare their bids, seal them by a certain date, and then have them delivered. All those bids are opened in public then at a later date. And like I said, once those bids are open, and if it's the, if it's a qualified bidder, then the individuals will get it. So that's the process, and by the way, the first time even I significantly get involved in that process is when I'm, when I'm reviewing the memo that comes to you. That's when I figure out essentially what's happening. So I don't even have any input into it. So let's talk about the quote-unquote appearance of conflict. As I said, I did my own independent look at it, but recognizing that, you know, I work for the mayor, so knowing that the way that some people would look at that, we actually went out to an independent attorney, Clark Partington Hart, Larry Bond, and Stackhouse, and essentially, as part of this opinion, which I will have available to you tomorrow, but I wanted to touch on a few pieces of it because, shockingly, this has happened before. This kind of, this kind of a, a question has arisen before. And so the Florida Commission on Ethics has several advisory opinions that address generally this concept. I won't go into a terrible amount of detail on it, but, and CEO 823, the commission said that a corporation owned by a member of the Hillsborough County Transportation Committee could permissibly rent limousine services from companies regulated by the commission because the entity involved in the contractual relationship with the- because the entity involved in the contractual relationship with the regulated companies was not the member himself, but his corporation. And there are a couple other similar case law, that kind of, excuse me, similar ethics opinions that give you the general gist of it. The, but before, something even apart from that is that, based upon the facts, as this independent analysis looked at it, there is no contractual relationship between the mayor and either Rhodes, Inc., or Hughes. And so it's their opinion, that the plain language of the statute determines that there is no conflict in that regard. I hope that, once you have the opportunity to take a hard look at this, that there won't be any issues with this. I certainly did not go into it trying to find a decision. I wanted to look at it and bring forward a defendable, good position to this council, and I could find absolutely nothing that would suggest that there's any conflict.
Thank you. Ms. DeWise?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and thank you, Mr. Reynolds, for your investigation of this as well. And I'm pleased to hear that you are the approving officer of the 10% contingencies, or any contingency that's done. That is one part that is very important. I'm a little surprised that we had to go outside and spend $2,500 for an opinion in the past, and I don't know if something has changed, it may be our new form of government, but during the CNPA decisions and some work that my husband had done in the way past, like in the beginning of the conversation, it was brought up, and I could actually make a call to the Ethics Commission and give them the facts of the matter and get an initial, not a written, but just have a conversation of this as an issue. Sometimes you would, you'd go the whole process and get it in writing to determine that you do not have a conflict. So that is available to us, and I had thought that that would be the process, and I talked with the mayor before he left and asked, you know, if that was what was made available to him, and he said, "You'll like what you hear." So I'm glad that we at least have that opinion. I'm just sorry we spent the $2,500. The only other concern I have, and I'm pleased to hear there's not a conflict, and I think we should address this as a council, should this ever come up again, we're a small town, and lots of people hold hands. There's relationships in every facet of everyone's life up here, and we sometimes have conflicts as well. But because, even though there is not a conflict per Clark Partington Hart, the mayor is the contracting officer of our city, and I talked about a remedy for that when he is actually business partners with the people being awarded those contracts. I know it's a sealed bid, I know the rules were followed, but just for documentation and for keeping it at arm's length, who is the surrogate for that? Is it you as the city administrator? Is it another person on staff? Is it the president of council? I don't know if you can cross the two branches of government, but I feel there needs to be something in place for us to have someone alternative to the mayor in these cases that is actually the contracting officer. So I'll bring that up during new business, or, I mean, if we're at a point, I'll just do it then. That's the appropriate time that we can discuss it at our next meeting, so.
Ms. Reynolds, you want to respond to that?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. You know, the reason we spent $2,500 frankly is because, you know, I wanted to make sure that this council fully understood and recognized that we're trying to do what's right. And, you know, the fact that there is no conflict makes it really clear. There is no reason to do anything differently. And if there was a conflict, or if there was some other reason for adjusting the procedures, I've got no problem with that. But, you know, we're trying to solve issues that don't exist, and, you know, at this point, I would hope that we could just move forward. Thank you.
Councilwoman Mark?
Yes, well, I want to thank Mr. Reynolds for delving into this matter, and, you know, but it does, I think, point out why the council needs to have on retainer our own independent attorney. And I appreciate Mr. Reynolds going to the trouble and expense to get a legal opinion, considering that Mr. Messer felt that he was not able to do so. I do think this is an important issue, because even if there is no illegality here, because of all the relationships of the people involved, it does to some citizens give the appearance of impropriety. So I will support the award of the contract, even though it does kind of stink to me. But I'm relying on Mr. Reynolds' research, and I assume that we will get a copy of the written legal opinion, and I can look at it in more detail. But I do hope that, I'm eager to hear what Councilwoman DeWise is proposing as a solution to the issues that have been raised regarding this. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, does that satisfy G also, item G?
It does, and we were just talking, because that was conditional upon an opinion or addressing that state statute, and because Mr. Reynolds has an official document, I would like to request that document become part of our official action. That way, it is, the condition is satisfied, the opinion is part of our official city record, and we move forward. So, yes, but it takes care of G as well. For me, I'm not speaking for anyone else.
Thank you. We have one member, our, an audience would like to speak to, Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Councilwoman Taylor. Mr. Reynolds, actually, real quick, busy, could you clarify, I think I must have totally misunderstood something. You were saying that it's a person, the individual cannot contract for something, but that if they just incorporate themselves, then that company can contract, that just didn't add up, because I must have misheard it.
Yeah, and I can have the opinion available, and you can take a look at it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is that right?
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense, but I understand, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Do we have a motion?
We have a motion, a second.
Okay. Please come.
Marlon Mueller, I find it interesting that here, what was it, three, four council meetings ago, the best and lowest bid from a woman that did auto, the auto auctions here, was turned down by the mayor's office, because they wanted to stir things up. Now, because it's the mayor's friends, you know, they want to go with the lowest and best bid. After the meeting of the whole, I went up to the bidding office and did a little research. I personally think there's holes in the, in the way the bidding process is handled from the time it leaves the hand of the bidder to the time that it's opened. I think that somebody should look at that setup. Things are date stamped, but times are written in by hand. Things are left out in the open where people can look at and see stuff, and this is just what I saw in about 10 minutes of being there. You know, I think that there are some things that should be looked at in the bidding process. And one other thing I would just like to mention quickly is, and ask a question, would this bid, or these two bids still have been the lowest bids if the 10% contingency kicks in? That's, you know, something that should be looked at also, thank you.
Just a minute, Councilwoman DeWise might want to speak, she wants to speak to.
I just actually had a couple comments. I don't know if there's someone available on staff to answer his question. I mean, but what his concerns were, I have the entire purchasing manual of how things are to be done as part of a records request. I didn't intend to get it, but it was part of requests that I had done, so I'm happy to share that with you. If you'll email me, I can give you that. And I would love to hear the information that you were just sharing about how it's handled. I do trust that this was the highest of security as far as the processes go, and there was no way anyone could have known who the low bidder was. It's just a weird twist of fate, and, you know, I've said that to many folks, that that is true, and I do congratulate the lowest bidder, and I'm proud that we finally have the process followed all the way through, as it must be, because it's construction projects, but that we did have a process that was followed the entire way. So hallelujah for that, but I'm happy to talk to you later on about the other things. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds, a gentleman out there raised a question regarding a couple of RFPs, and I think Mr. Mayberg heard him on this wondering that we could supply his answers at some other date. Would that be, if they will respond to you regarding the question, did you hear the question that he raised? Now, you weren't here, but I think maybe George did.
No, sir, but we can certainly sit down and.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, please vote. Okay. Next is the report of the Community Redevelopment Agency.
Yes, thank you.
Just a minute.
Item G.
Item G. We voted on that one, didn't we, just now?
That was item F.
Okay. Move to approve.
Second.
I'll move it second. Please vote. I thought we had taken both of those as an answer. Okay, the next item is Community Redevelopment, is that correct?
Yes.
No, we, did we have some, no, some committee reports?
Committed the whole report, Mr. Vice.
Got some committee reports. Item A is Financial Oversight Amendment to City Purchases and Contracting Ordinance. The recommended that City Council direct the city attorney to draft and organize amended city purchases and contracting regulations and other budgetary control is outlined in Council memorandum, memorandum dated September 13, 2012.
Move to approve.
Second.
I'll move it second. Councilman Gerald?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. My concern with this particular item is I'm wondering, how does it relate to the disparity study and the recommendations that may be in, may be contained in their report as it relates to MGT? And these are specifically related to purchasing and contracting regulations. So how, if someone can answer for me, how does this relate to the disparity study results and any recommendations or remedies that may have come forth? If we can get an answer on that.
That's a question we'd have to address another time, Mr. Vice President. It certainly isn't something we've looked at.
Thank you. Councilman Gerald?
Well, in that case, I think we should hold it or table it until we get that information, so that we will know what the relationship is between the MGT study and what's being recommended here. We need to see what they sent us back, what their findings were, and what recommendations or remedies, if any, that they have indicated that relate specifically to purchasing and contracting regulations.
Put that in a substitute motion?
Yes, I would. I put in a substitute motion that we hold this item or table it until we get those answers and see what is in that final report from MGT.
I got a second. Didn't pass for lack of a second. So we go back to the original motion. Any other question? Audience? Please vote. Next item is five to four to. Who's gone? I did not vote, did I? Yep.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
You did, well.
So it failed.
It failed.
Is it okay?
I'm sorry?
It needs five in council.
Needs five votes to pass in council.
Ryan, did you people, okay?
Councilmembers Pratt and Johnson are not in right now.
Councilwoman Pratt, absent for vote. Okay, let's see that. Okay. Okay. Next item, authority under the city charter, professional service contract. City Council direct the city attorney to obtain a, it's probably moot as much as the city attorney can't give them a legal opinion.
Well, it's not moot.
I mean in terms of him doing it.
No, he can give a legal opinion on this.
And I'll arrange to have an opinion prepared if that passes, Mr. Vice President.
All we're asking for is for him to do the research on it. We're not asking for any specific action.
Thank you. The City Council direct the city attorney to obtain a legal opinion whether or not council has authority under the charter to stipulate that certain positions within the city government, such as city administrator, chief of staff, department head, head of office, and other administrative positions, not be subject to outside professional service contract. The motion passed six to two with Councilmember Gerald and Will the Senate. Councilmember Espada absent for the vote. Wish you pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second.
I'll move it second. Question for council members? Please vote. Okay, five to three, four to two with Pratt. Councilwoman Pratt absent. Okay, the next item up for bid is.
Up for bid? Were you in auction? He said the next item up for bid, sorry.
They all got me put RFPs and all this kind of stuff. Well, the next item, that's the way it looks like it's going, that we're bidding all this. The next item is a report of the Community Redevelopment Agency.
Yes, my offer for an opening bid, the board report. For our Community Redevelopment Agency meeting that occurred on September 24 of 2012, that included the approval of the September 10 meeting amendments as submitted, approved, and passed unanimously. Number two, sponsorship authorizing the installation of a Wayfaring sign. The motion that the CRA sponsor and authorize the installation of a Wayfaring sign in the public right of way within the dense business area adjacent to the Community Maritime Park upon coordination with the chairman of the CNPA Design Committee regarding consistency of signage, infrastructure, colors with adopting the, adopted CNPA guidelines. That motion passed unanimously. Number three, the amendment to the lease agreement for 16 Palafax second-floor tenant. Motion carried unanimously that the CRA authorized the mayor to amend and restate the lease agreement between the CRA and Titan Entertainment Group, LLC. Finally, CRA board memorandum was distributed with a motion that the Community Redevelopment Agency approved an interlocal agreement for fiscal year 2013 in the amount of $141,800 for CRA landscape maintenance services with the addition of the A Street, A Street streetscape improvement per the CRA's percentage of contribution. And that motion also carried unanimously. That is the end of my report. Mr. Vice.
Thank you.
President.
Thank you. We have one member, Ms. Dubois.
Good evening, council. I'm rising this evening to request that in the future at CRA meetings, all business that the CRA is contemplating be reported to this group when you sit as the board of the CRA. I was quite surprised to find out about the grant application that was being submitted on behalf of the CRA for a half million dollars to purchase statues to go in the Bayfront Beautification Project. I believe at this point that there are a lot of parts of the CRA that could have benefited from part of this money, and for that decision to be determined by staff without any input from this. from this council when it sits as a board of the CRA, I thought was unfortunate. I believe that Ms. Wittenberger is doing, you know, a yeoman's job with as much as she does have to cover, but I do believe having input from this council as to the priorities that the whole CRA might benefit from, might have been beneficial, and I would encourage in the future that anything that's being contemplated be brought before the board of the CRA for consideration before actions are taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 14, order of first reading, Madam Clerk.
There are none.
Okay, and then 15A.
Item 15A is proposed ordinance number 23-12 and ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance amending section 7-4-2 of the Code of the City of Pensacola, Florida, amending hours of operation for the sale of alcoholic beverages, providing for severability, repealing clause providing an effective date.
Wish your pleasure.
Move the approval.
Second.
Question, please vote.
Oh, wait.
Oh, just a minute. Councilwoman Ruiz.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I have an email that I have not been able to open that I, again, I was shocked that no one came to speak to this at any of our meetings. I thought we would have had a room full of people, but we didn't. I just wanted to ask if anyone else on council has been able to open that email. It came sometime this afternoon, and I've tried this whole meeting to dial in and see. It's Mr. Homer Biggers, and it's the Blue Law second reading, and I can't see any more than that. I don't know if members of staff heard from him as well, or if anyone on council could open that email and see what his concerns were. I just wanted to make sure they were on the record.
I think I read that, and this person was thanking us for actually doing it. I think that was the gist of it. Is that correct? Get Councilwoman Pratt.
Going to say what you said.
Okay, Councilwoman Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, and that's why, I apologize why I left the room, is I was trying to get my emails to open when I missed the votes here just a minute ago or so, that I was in the back with CJ trying to get my computer and my emails to work. So apologize for missing those votes, and that's what I was just doing, trying to get my emails to open.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Please vote. Item 15B has a change. Who's going to explain that one? Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. After it's read and the council has the ability to have it brought forward, Mr. Barker will have an explanation as to what the issue is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Vice President. Members of city council, if you recall, this ordinance was one that was brought forward on first reading last time. That was actually asked that council approve items seven and eight. That was part of the committee item. The union said that they were willing to go ahead and have it approved on first reading until the union and negotiating team with the city could get together. They have not reached agreement. They do not want to move forward on seven and eight. So the ordinance, I believe the city clerk has put before you, does not have that item. So you would be approving, what she'll be reading into the record is the ordinance that she placed in front of you today, which excludes item seven and eight, that agreement could not be made with the union.
Okay, and also requires six votes.
It does require a two-thirds vote, that's correct, sir.
Yes.
So our action, though, and the recommendation that was read was including seven and eight. So should there be a motion to approve as read excluding item seven and eight, even though she's reading one that was not approved by us on Monday? That's what I'm, I mean, last time.
Right. So we need the motion.
Our official, the parliamentarian may be able to answer this, because it was originally, the motion was to remove it. Then it was asked at the first reading to put it back in, seven and eight. So we put it back in, but our original action had it out. So now it's being removed again. So is there a particular motion we need to make removing them and approve it as read, or is as read enough?
I would think we need a motion.
Return.
Yeah, so if I could get the motion to that effect.
The, Mr. Vice Chair, the motion, I believe, should commence by determining whether we have a two-thirds vote to waive the rule to amend, and then we have a second reading and then amend. I see the clerk is bobbing up and down, so I must be doing well.
Thank you. Okay, so I get a motion to that effect.
I move to amend, removing item seven and eight from the ordinance.
Second.
Any questions? Please vote. It was approved unanimously. Now, do I need to do anything else on this one?
At this time, I'll need to read the title of the ordinance into the record.
Please.
Item 15B is proposed ordinance number 25, 24-12 and ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance amending the Code of the City of Pensacola, Florida, amending provisions of the general pension and retirement plan, amending section 9-5-102, amending definitions, amending section 9-5-115, providing normal retirement with 20 or more years of service, amending section 9-5-116, providing for early retirement, amending sections 9-5-117, providing for normal retirement with less than 20 years of service, amending section 9-5-119, providing for disability, injury, or illness in line of duty, amending section 9-5-121, providing for disability, injury, or illness not in the line of duty, amending section 9-5-122, providing for other benefit provisions, amending section 9-5-124, providing for cost of living increases, repealing section 9-5-135, providing for additional benefits, creating section 9-5-141, providing for applicability of ordinance, providing for severability, repealing clause providing an effective date.
Move the approval.
Second.
Okay, council, we have one person who won't speak to that, and it's Ms. Kimberly Akwia.
Okay.
Good evening, council vice president, council members. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. Ask Me wishes to read the letter that we presented to council regarding the general pension ordinance into record. Dear council member, I'm writing to inform you the position the City of Pensacola Employees' Union Ask Me Local 3253 has in regards to the two additional ordinance changes for the general pension. The union has reviewed the two changes proposed by the City of Pensacola to the general employees' pension plan, and based upon this review, the union cannot support the proposed changes at this time. The default language in the election of an employee representative is contrary to establish democratic principles and results in the elimination of an opportunity for the employees to have a voice. The union is especially concerned about the proposal to reopen the pension plan. It seems that if the City of Pensacola's intention to downsize the pension and alleviate the burden on our community is contradicted by opening the pension. We believe that through negotiation process, the union and the City of Pensacola came to a successful outcome for the citizens of the city. Thank you so very much for your help. I just wanted to add that when I got here is when I found out about the changes to seven and eight, and that it was removed from the ordinance, and for that, Ask Me is grateful and appreciate the action by the mayor and the City of Pensacola. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Please vote. Item 16, resolution, item 16A.
Item 16A is resolution number 43-12, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution authorizing and making revisions and appropriations for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2012, providing for an effective date.
Move the approval. Be second.
Second.
Move to second. Questions? Please vote. Pass unanimously, item 16B.
Item 16B is resolution number 44-12, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution authorizing and making revisions and appropriations for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2012, providing for an effective date.
Wish your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Questions? Please vote. Item, unanimously, item 16C.
Item 16C is resolution number 45-12, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution authorizing and making revisions and appropriations for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2012, providing for an effective date.
Wish your pleasure.
Where are we on? B.
Do they have a motion? Move the approval.
Second.
Can...
Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Vice President, once you pass this, I have something that Mr. Barker needs to address.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Ruiz.
I just had a question. Are we on 16C, the award of the Board of Pensacola? Is that where we are?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't hear that on the title. I just wanted to understand, when I read through this on the financial part of it, the commentary is what's confusing me, and I just wanted to hear from Mr. Barker. I mean, the shore power is costing less, so we're allocating that towards this cost, so it's not an increase in the cost of what we had originally anticipated, the gatehouse. It's just a reallocation of where you're getting the money from, is what, I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Barker?
Yes, sir, Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Vice President, members of council, Mr. Ruiz, that's correct as you read it.
Please vote. Pass unanimously, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Barker?
Yes, sir, Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Vice President, members of city council, for all the ordinances on second reading this evening and all the budget resolutions, in reading the charter and discussing this with the city attorney, and being this is the end of the fiscal year, I need these to take effect immediately upon passage. And although they say that, according to the charter, none of the ordinances or resolutions are effective upon adoption, but five days after adoption, unless the mayor sends council, sends the city clerk notification to send a council, that all these take effect and he does not plan on vetoing those. I have spoke with the mayor about this, and you should be receiving a letter tomorrow letting you know that he is not planning on vetoing any of these, and therefore they can take effect upon notification. And I just want to let council know that. It's sort of unusual, but we're at the end of the fiscal year, and these need to be passed before September 30th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have unfinished business. I'd like to raise a question regarding the status of the ESP deal issue with Gulf Reeds, because we could get something on that our next committee of the whole, find out how that's going, rather than deal with it here. And also the status of the Legendfield RFP, and where we are on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Ruiz?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and I had told Mr. Marvin Mueller that I wanted to bring up, again, the concerns that he had, and I don't know if he would have a chance to come speak again, or if we should just have it be on the next agenda by a vote of council. His concern about the section of the charter, powers and duties and differentiation, but most importantly, whether the mayor is compelled to attend the meetings or not. So I would just like that as in a discussion item, how we may be able to have that discussion with the mayor or without the mayor, whichever, I don't know how it would be done, but at our next committee of the whole.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'd be right on that.
Mr. Jenny.
Thanks. Now, I know we've been through this before, and we've been through it before so many times that I actually simply have a laminated card that I carry around that's highlighted, that I try to pass around to interested people.
Pardon me, but could you get that as a bookmark for all of us?
Yes, sir, which I'll just read. This is section 1-1-1 of the ordinances of the City of Pensacola that were specifically enacted by council in order to comport with the provisions of our charter. And the title of it is General Provisions Conforming Code to 2010 Charter. Paragraph sub B says, "All references to the duties of the mayor," all references to the duties of the mayor, shall, shall also be inclusive of the mayor's authority to execute the function described through a designee, a designee of his or her choice." Voila, a designee. I can't do any better.
Okay, thank you. Council, Spencer had it.
Actually, I apologize, I pressed right before Councilwoman Ruiz introduced the topic. I'm just standing, I'm in the queue line for new business.
Okay, and I would just like to respond, because I would like to make a motion. I'm fully aware, and I would love to have a copy of that, actually, so I can have a bookmark, but we need to start to acknowledge that we are two years into this new form of government, and we need to take a look at the parts of the charter that continue to rub on the citizens and frustrate them, and frustrate council for that matter. I don't think it's a lost cause to start talking about those, maybe not in the form of a charter review commission, but this council has the opportunity to make amendments to the charter. I was actually, in this week of looking up this new perceived reversal with line item, had an opportunity to look at other charters, and I was amazed to see the amendments to their charter in the middle of a year, and here and there. It wasn't an exact date defined by the adoption of a budget or the beginning of the year. They were making amendments all the time. It's a living, breathing document. So I hear Mr. Messer, and I respect the opinion that he gives, but the citizens continually ask, where is our mayor? And there is some confusion on powers and duties, what they are. So I would like to have that conversation at our next committee of the whole of the mayor attending meetings, and I'm making that motion.
Second.
You put that in form of a motion?
Yes, that is my motion, that we discuss the part of the charter discussing the mayor's powers and duties, specifically his duty to attend meetings, or his power, I should be fair and say that.
Okay, we got a second. Any discussion on that? Please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. You want to speak to that?
I most certainly do.
Go ahead, please.
Because Mr. Mueller also mentioned the fact that they would be preparing a legal challenge. So where does all that fit into us having a discussion about it? And if Mr. Mueller liked to clear that up, but he indicated during his comments that they were preparing a legal challenge. Can I communicate with him? Did he not, did y'all not hear that?
He did.
If he'd like to speak, so if he's preparing a legal case, and we want to sit down and talk about it, I'd like to know where all of this is headed.
Okay. Now, please, come on.
I don't believe that anything I should do should stand, or do should stand in the way of what this council, what Councilwoman Ruiz has proposed. I think, I, you know, you guys have your thing to do. I would love to work with you to help, you know, get the mayor here.
Okay.
You know, we're working on, I'm having somebody work on a, the court situation as a last resort. So, you know, we feel we're up against the fence, and, you know, I respect if there's something that we haven't looked at, and we'll have to, I'll have to get a bookmark myself and take a look at that, but I would like to work through the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's okay, that answers the question.
Okay, any other council person who will speak to that issue? Okay, any other council person who will speak to that issue here? Councilwoman Myers?
Yes, I do, would like to have that discussion, and Mr. Mueller has indicated that perhaps if we have this discussion, that that's a process that might work for him, rather than him pursuing a litigation strategy, but even if he did, the litigation isn't against the city council, it would have to do with the mayor. So, I don't see it as a problem, and he's indicated that he would, you know, like, he doesn't want to interfere with the council discussing this, and he's willing to see if what comes out of the process of us discussing it.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, again, a reminder, Occupy is currently suing us, so let's keep that in, you know, keep that in mind. The second is that words have meaning, and, you know, Mr. Messer is right, and I can't find my card, I thought I had it with me, but I have one of these cards too, and let me, let me, let me just, once again, because something's not connecting, so maybe, maybe we can go through this again, and something will connect. Section one, tac one, tac one, "General Provisions Conforming Code to the Twenty-Ten Charter." Section B, "All references to the duties of the mayor shall also be inclusive of the mayor's authority to execute the function described through a designee of his or her choice, unless the context of the provision clearly indicates the contrary." Ladies and gentlemen, it can't be more clear, and, you know, I, the only place I hear of this being an issue is in this room.
Thank you. Ms. Myers, you've spoken twice on this subject. Suppose, Ms. Councilwoman Dewise, your second chance, you ready?
I don't have my light on, do I?
Yes, it's still on.
No, it just wasn't turned off.
Okay, they didn't turn it off.
I didn't turn it back on.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Disregard. Please disregard, I'm sorry.
Well, disregard it, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, please, sorry, thank you.
Councilwoman Myers?
I just wanted to request a copy of this document that the city attorney and Mr. Reynolds keep referring to, I'd like to have a copy of that.
I requested that earlier.
Oh, you did?
Yes, I did.
Okay, but that'd be for about it, all council members?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification, it's your city ordinances.
Yeah, we like, we like it laminated and pretty, just like you guys.
Sir, I will, we will do that.
I might want to carry mine around.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
I'll go very fast, I'm so sorry. Mark Taylor, eleven eleven East Moreno Street, and I respect what Mr. Messer, Mr. Reynolds said, certainly, it's ordinance, and I guess the only, I would just recommend, council, just go along, what does it hurt to put it, to speak when we're not all worn out and tired and talk about this? The bottom line is, the charter was worded very different, the ordinance is something that y'all did, that said that this designee could take place, and that's great, and if y'all want to do that, or add some language that says fifty percent of the time, or put some numbers in there, just so we do have some presence of the mayor, but when we voted, when I voted for the charter in oh nine, I voted for a different document, not the ordinance document, I voted for a document that clearly stated that the mayor would attend all council meetings, so I think there is a little bit of clarification there, I think the bookmark is great, and I certainly respect their opinion on that, and they're, and they're right, the ordinance does say that they can do that, but y'all have the power to at least discuss it and possibly amend it, so it, it does help both groups, you know, so maybe the mayor will be here fifty percent of the time, or whatever, however y'all want to move forward on that, but do something so that we will have a little bit of access, I think the mayor did a great job, I think Mr. Reynolds is better spoken, he's more up on the stuff, but that's because that's what he does all day, every day, but, you know, but he did, he did good, I mean, that's enough, thank you very much, city council.
Thank you, we will, we will, we will add, have that as an item on the committee as a whole, if you don't mind for discussion, okay?
We have to vote on it, don't we, to put it on the agenda? There's a motion and a second.
Did you have a motion on it?
Yeah, there's a motion and a second, and to put it on the agenda, we have to vote.
All right, Councilwoman Gerald, did you have one, still speak to this?
Yes, just a brief, a brief comment, and I will continue to remind you, remind all of us, that my request for a review of the charter will give us an opportunity to identify these things.
This is what this is going to be?
It's the beginning.
That's exactly what we're doing.
Finally, we're coming to our senses, I presume.
I hope so. Okay, please vote. May I?
I'm pressing my.
Oh, I thought you were headed for another subject.
And then once this got heated, I wanted to get in.
Oh, please forgive me. Councilwoman Spencer?
All right, thank you, could you please state the motion before I speak?
Please state your motion.
I make a motion that at our next committee of the whole, that we have as a discussion item, the portion of the charter for the mayor's powers and duties specifically to attend council meetings.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All right, I do not support the motion. We, I just am sitting here flabbergasted, we had the mayor here tonight, he was here for about ninety minutes, I saw laughter, I saw smiling, I saw Councilwoman Myers, I saw Councilwoman Dewise, I saw all of them grab both sides of the olive branch in front of the TVs while the cameras were rolling, the mayor is now out of the room, and there's, in my opinion, a completely different attitude. The mayor has made it clear, and that he is going to, he has, he has represented that he will join us and attend meetings, he didn't specify all the time, but he asked for our trust, why in the world would we not, just an hour after, an hour and a half after he's out of the room, not extend to him the trust that he asked us to do?
Thank you. Councilwoman Dewise, and Councilwoman Myers, Councilwoman Dewise?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and I do want to respond to that, I don't normally respond directly to a council member's comments, but the reason for the motion is sitting in the audience, there is a citizen, and there are many citizens, that is something that bothers so many people when I see them in public, we are the only access that the citizens have had to their government for a very long time, I am so proud that the mayor came tonight, I was thrilled to see him here and defending his veto and discussing things with the citizens, this isn't attacking the mayor, once again, this is good process, that charter can be amended and should be discussed, and it's not saying it doesn't work, it's answering the question for the citizens, they're at a frustration point that they're getting ready to take it to court, I think it deserves a discussion by this council, and give the citizens an opportunity to express their concerns, and say, I just want him here once every month, and that would be half the meetings, or even less, I mean, some months, we meet once a month, but the discussion needs to happen, it's not an affront on the mayor an hour after he left, behind his back, this is responding to citizen concerns, and I'm sorry that my honorable colleague feels the way that he does, I don't see it as a disrespect to the mayor, I see it as a respect to the people that I work for, thank you.
Councilwoman Myers?
Yes, I would like to just add my voice in response to Councilman Spencer. Councilman Gerald's just talked about, at the Cal meeting, and here, that we need to look at the charter, and I think that we do need to look at the charter collectively as a body, and so are we going to look at the, everything in the charter except this one issue? I mean, this is the beginning, we obviously can't look at the charter all at one time, we're going to have to look at it in pieces, but I, but I, and so I think we should have that discussion, and I think this concerns a lot of citizens, and people often make remarks about the mayor not being at council, and in fact, the Gulf Coast Business Review that the Zimmerman Agency brought to us at the Cal meeting two weeks ago, was an extremely favorable article about the mayor. Well, when I went home and went online and read that article, one of the things that the article said is that he is known as the absentee mayor, now that's a statement that was made in an article that was extremely flattering and positive about, about our mayor, and that company, I think, is in Tallahassee or Panama City, I can't remember, but all the way over there, they know that he has the reputation of being an absentee mayor, and I would think it would be in his interest also to clear this up, and maybe Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Messer are giving us the right legal interpretation of the charter, I don't know, but I do think that we need to discuss it, that's part of the charter discussion that Councilman Gerald's wants us to have, we have to start someplace, and a citizen has brought this forward, and so I think we should have it.
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, a couple of points, I'll tell you, I was really struck, probably, in reality, for the, one of the first times, really struck by some comments that were made earlier by the young professionals of this city, those that you want to be here, that you want to encourage to stay, that you want to encourage to develop businesses and families, and remain in this great city, and the thing that really struck me about what they had to say was their optimism. How many times do we hear optimism coming before us here? They had unbridled optimism, and they talked about the research that they had conducted through an independent polling firm, and talked about the incredible feeling of optimism of not just them, but the city as a whole. You have a mayor who has a seventy-six percent approval rating, I've been in politics a long time, I've never worked with anybody that has that, ever, and why is that? Give those individuals as much as you're giving someone who currently is suing the city. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Okay, please vote. Pass is full of, full to three, right? Okay, any other unfinished business? Okay, new business? What you got?
Yes, I have several things that I wanted to ask to be placed on the agenda of the next Cal meeting, but, but before I do, I received a call from Mr. Peacock, and had a nice conversation with him, he asked me if I would make a motion that his appointment to the DIB be reconsidered, I told him I would make that motion, even though I did not commit to voting for him, so I'm going to make the motion for the purposes of discussion.
Were you the prevailing party on the prevailing?
Yes.
Okay, have you made the motion?
I just made the motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Okay.
Is the motion and the second from the prevailing side, or does it matter?
It does.
Yes, it has to be from the prevailing.
I don't know, good point, that's the second.
The second is not, the second is from the other side.
Well, I'll second.
Does it matter?
I'll second, I'll.
All right.
I'll second.
It doesn't matter.
Okay, okay, pro move in second, comments? Councilwoman Myers?
Well, Mr. Peacock, is he here? I don't think so.
Yeah, he's, he's right there.
Okay, first, I would, I would like to give Mr. Peacock the opportunity to say something if he wishes, before I make my comments.
Okay, I might add, I looked at the demographics of the DIB to try to make a determination as to the makeup.
Mr. Vice President, you need to vote to reconsider that.
May I?
You need to vote before you start discussing that.
Mr. Vice Chairman? Right. We need to take a vote to reconsider before we do reconsider, and, and that's, that's a majority vote to pass the motion.
Okay, can we make, please vote for reconsideration.
I voted no, my button's not working. I voted no, my button's not working, I'm pressing it.
I thought we were losing more button.
So, it's five to one, here's our credits, okay. Okay, now we can have a discussion. I was saying that I, I looked at the lines of the DIB, and one of the big issues was whether there was any minority business owners, I think, that was the criteria, if I recall, and as far as I could determine, I can't say it to be a fact, that we had, we had a void in that capacity, okay, so that's my comments on it, anybody else want to speak?
Right.
Okay, Councilwoman Gerald?
Mr. Vice Chairman, excuse me for interrupting, I, I think we need now a motion to nominate Mr. Peacock from someone, in other words, we have moved to reconsider it, now we need to move to nominate him with a second before we can discuss it.
Thank you, could I, could I get a motion to add a fact?
I move to approve the mayor's appointment of John Peacock to the DIB.
Did I get a second?
Second.
Pro move in second, question?
Comment?
Please vote.
This is just a vote, this is just to consider.
What? No.
No, no, no.
The vote was taken to reconsider, the motion is on the floor to recommend him yet to make the appointment.
Yeah.
Not to make it, but to consider.
Does everybody vote?
No, no, that has already been done, the vote is.
We're not voting on the nomination.
Nomination, and I think we have discussion now by councilman, by the.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I made a motion to nominate.
Okay, we got, we got the motion for reconsideration, we did that, now we have a motion to.
Nominate.
Nominate, and we had a second for that, now, questions, comments? From the council?
I do.
Myers, Councilwoman Myers?
Yes, I've really given this a lot of thought, and I go back to our commitment to have women and minorities on our boards, and I believe that, you know, we need to say what we mean and mean what we say, I know that there are very qualified women in the DIB area that own property, who have, and businesses there, and I believe that we would really be remiss in not seeing to it that a woman or a minority be brought before, before us for approval to be on the DIB. At this point, every person on the DIB board is either male or white, and I think that that just sends the wrong message, I think that Mr. Peacock has a lot to offer, and there are other ways that he can participate in improving downtown, but. But I think that, you know, in light of the mayor not calling women to appear at a press conference with him...
That's not, that's not what we're talking about.
Well, it has to do...
Let's stick to the DIB.
Well, this is the mayor's nomination, actually. And I believe that we need to have diversity on our boards, and so I'm going to be looking to the mayor to bring us more diversity in his appointments.
Thank you.
Our nominations.
Councilwoman Gerald?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And earlier, I received a call from Ms. Dubuson about some of the issues and concerns that I have, and it all relates to race and gender. And I was wondering if it would be appropriate at this time if she would care to share that information with us. Because my concern was, and then you just stated that you've looked at the demographics, and it appears that we have a void in that area of business owners.
It's African-American.
But does that include residents who are in the DIB?
No, it didn't.
It did not?
Okay.
And if you don't mind, without objection, if Ms. Dubuson may be allowed to share with us the information that she's discovered through research that might enlighten us in terms of the direction we ought to take.
Ms. Dubuson?
Yes, sir. First, respecting the presence of minorities, which I would define as women are people who have a diverse ethnicity. There are residents as well as business owners. We have minority business owners, not just women business owners, but minority business owners in the DIB. We have residents who fit both of those categories. And we have active volunteers who regularly go to committee meetings, who do the work of the DIB as volunteers, who reside in and own property and are business owners there. Not as many as we would hope for, but they are there. So that point, I really would appreciate if everyone would recognize, just because someone is not an African-American woman, doesn't mean that we don't have African-Americans and women.
I don't think we implied. We did not imply that.
Well, I'm just really...
But we did not imply that.
Okay. The second thing is, at the meeting on Monday, there was the conversation that you could add to the committee, and Mr. Messer was asked to look into it, and it was, you know, we'll get back to you. If you go to the actual empowerment document that the state of Florida has, the legislation of 2003, which amended the 1972 legislation which created the DIB, in order to change the structure of the boards, you have to have a 20% freeholder referendum come up, which means that you would have to go through an entire election and then go to the state legislature and have them amend your document. This is not something you can do in one meeting, as we did for the committee members of the earlier committee that we changed.
Record.
This is an important structural difference. This is a separate governmental entity that you're now trying to say, because we don't want to look beyond the first nomination, we want to change the structure of an organization. I would really encourage you to hear what the community that works within the DIB, as well as the community outside of the DIB, is saying, in that they want some diversity. We don't have a lot of diversity down there, and we'll never get it if they feel separated out. And that is what I hear. I work among several communities here that would love to be a part, but they can't figure out how to engage. And until we get people who are in the decision-making point that can bring that level of conversation to the table, we're going to keep having the same situation. The DIB has been a very good thing for Pensacola. Pensacola downtown is wonderful, but it can be even better. And the more diversity we bring, the better the conversations at the table are. And that is not to say anything against Mr. Peacock and his capabilities, and I tried to make that real clear the other day. I think that there are plenty of places we can use Mr. Peacock and his abilities. This is just not the place that I feel right now it belongs. Ms. Dunlap, who sits in the audience right now, was summarily removed by this mayor last year in the appointment process. Two individuals who were working diligently for the DIB were summarily removed. They weren't even told that they weren't going to be continuing. They found it out at a meeting. Mr. Bob Denzlyke, who is the existing board member, who has consistently attended meetings and who even called in from a hospital situation one time in order that they could have cor room, did not even know he was not being continued on the DIB until it came out in the news after the meeting on Monday. The disrespect with which the people who do the work of the DIB are being treated in this whole nomination process, and the lack of thought of how it plays out, is what I'm concerned about. And this whole thing of we can just add a couple of more, that's not the solution. You can't just simply add a couple more. So please look at the documentation.
Thank you. Ms. Dunlap?
So it didn't bother me but about three days when I found out that, for the first time in the history, I think, of the board, the DIB board, who recommends to the mayor, who to appoint, that the mayor chose not to appoint, Mr. Vednar and me. But that doesn't bother me, and that's not why I'm speaking. I wanted to let you know that the DIB, the 44-block district, is made up of 42% women business owners, 42%. I have 10 commercial leases, and of those 10, seven of them are women-owned, 70% in the biggest commercial block of downtown. That's the Sanger Block. Do the right thing.
Councilwoman Spencer?
Thank you. I think that many people that have been engaged with DIB recognize your level of activity as a volunteer, whether it be at whatever committee you're on. Certainly, the DIB welcomes your input as a committee member. They are an active group. I'm really just going to divert for a minute away from the male-female racial issue and just put kind of the council on notice that I hope that we can look at the DIB district and gain, as a council, a very clear understanding of just how confined and small this district Certainly, tonight, we're discussing the addition of a member, but the reason I'm supporting John Peacock is he has decided to live in the district, and I think Ms. Dubuson has some very good points about that it's not just a simple case of adding two chairs at the table, and that's how we saw that. I look forward to getting from the city, city staff, and particularly DIB. I mean, I've been trying to find these documents that show today the current breakdown of the number of residences and businesses, et cetera. But for those of you that may not be involved with DIB, in some areas, it's limited to four blocks wide. And some of those blocks have, one of the blocks, two or three have nothing but interstate exchanges with no density. And the DIB has not been able to grow as much as Kim Kimbrough has tried, because when you're on the other side of the street of a property owner that's paying two additional mils that you aren't, many people are recognizing they're gaining the benefit of an active DIB, but they're not having to pay the freight. So certainly, I know with Mr. Peacock, we've got someone who is passionate, and I support his addition to the DIB.
Councilwoman Gerald?
Thank you, Mr. President. Some of you may consider this a little bit off the subject, but a couple of months ago, we passed an ordinance to be inclusive of race and gender on our boards and commissions. And to me, that's a policy. Does that policy extend across the board, to all boards and commissions and appointments? Or are the mayor's appointments not included in that ordinance? Anybody know?
Mr. Metzger?
I kept scooting back, so you couldn't see me, but apparently you found me.
I saw you.
I don't have the ordinance in front of me. I would have to take a look at it. But of course, I drafted it at council's behest, and I would think in all fairness, it would be inclusive across the board. Otherwise, it doesn't really make a lot of sense. So I would doubt if there are any exceptions to it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. I just want to clear it up, get the mud out of the water, so then we can determine what we should be doing.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments?
Again, Mr. Messer just articulated that that policy runs across to mayoral appointees.
Yes.
I think that's a very important clarification that I don't believe we heard Monday.
Okay, are we ready to vote here? Please vote.
What was the motion again?
What was the motion? The motion was to nominate Mr. Peacock to the board, right? The DIB board, right?
Want to vote again?
Has Mr. Peacock, does Mr. Peacock...
Was that the motion?
Yes, to appoint Mr. Peacock.
Motion, yeah.
I think more properly, to confirm his nomination.
Okay, to reconfirm. Did somebody make that motion? That was your word?
Councilman Spencer.
Who seconded?
I did.
Okay. To reconfirm his nomination. Any more questions? Okay. It passes five to two. All right. Any other new business?
Yes, I said I had three items of new business.
You can't have no three items this time, am I?
These are just...
On the new business?
These are just agenda requests.
Well, what is it? May I ask you a question? What is this role of women card that I have here?
I want to speak at public forum. I could do that.
But that's out of new business.
No, that, no, I'm not...
Okay, all right. Let's do...
We're still under new business.
All right, we on the new business night.
Okay.
Councilwoman Myers?
Two agenda items that I'd like to see on the next COW meeting. One is a discussion about retaining outside council when Mr. Messer has a conflict of interest. We need to have somebody on retainer that we can go to when Mr. Messer has a conflict of interest.
Okay.
I would like for that to be an agenda item, so I'm going to make a motion that that be placed on the...
Do we have to have a motion for that?
Second, you actually do, because then if you don't have a motion to do that, then it's at the determination of one person, not the whole council.
Okay. Do we get a second?
Yes.
Proper move. You second. Proper move to second, that we have a discussion at the next meeting regarding a retainer for council. Questions? Here's your number. Councilwoman Myers?
Thank you. My next agenda item motion is I would like to have a discussion on adopting an ordinance, our resolution, making the city of Five Flags the official motto for the city of Pensacola. A second.
I'll move to second.
Y'all just want to go home, that's what this is.
Councilwoman Myers?
Is it obvious?
There.
It's 4:30.
You have anything else, councilman?
That's all under new business.
Okay. Any other new business?
I've got about an hour worth of stuff. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
You need to say something?
No.
Okay. Okay, we have three people who like to speak on the forum.
Thank you.
How many cards do you have here?
I actually have two cards.
Say what?
I actually have two cards, because I had my hand up when we were talking about the mayor coming, so that I could, I wanted some direct...
Let me ask you a question. Did you not have your conversation about the mayor earlier?
I had my hand up, and nobody called on me.
Oh, you've been up here five times talking about the mayor.
Well, I had some direct comments back to Mr. Reynolds.
Well, go ahead on and speak about Occupy, please.
Okay, let me get my... Thank you again for giving me the time to speak at this meeting, the city council.
You are.
As you know, I'm with Occupy, and our one-year anniversary is coming soon. So we thought it was a good time to inform you about who we are now and what Occupy has become, and what we see for the future of Occupy. The Occupy of today is made up of a diverse group of people from all walks of life. At any meeting today, Occupy, any, sorry, at any meeting of today's Occupy, you are likely to see people from the medical field, business owners, farmers, educators, students, and retirees. Today's Occupy is made up of Republicans, Democrats, independents, and a smattering of anarchists. We are old, young, and every age in between. You will see people who have made it in life and people who are struggling. And without a doubt, you will see United States citizens working together with one goal. People ask me, in fact, some of you have asked me, why am I involved in Occupy? The better question would be, why aren't you involved in Occupy? This is a group whose only goal is better government. These are citizens who, because they feel disenfranchised from the governing bodies of this union, spend their time and money working to overcome the disconnections of communication, as well as work to educate and empower other citizens in connecting with their governmental representatives. Occupy peasant, sorry, Occupy its late. Occupy Pensacola is at present working on internet or internal reorganization. We're looking into the future and promoting the actual message of Occupy and building the image. To that end, I'm proud to announce the rebranding campaign of Occupy Pensacola. Our slogan is Occupy. It's the upside of Pensacola. We didn't spend any money on our rebranding effort, but I think our slogan is just as good as the one that the people of the city are paying big money for. As I stated in the beginning of this talk, Occupy will be enjoying its one-year anniversary. Our celebration is open to the public, and I would like to specifically invite the mayor, all city council members, and all employees of the city. We will be celebrating Monday, October 15th, and you'll be able to join us at a number of locations at various times. We'll start our celebrations at Plaza de Luna at 7:00 a.m. We will... We will also be at Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Plaza from 7:30 to 10:30. You can find us at City Hall from 10:30 to 1:00 p.m., and our next stop will be from 1:30 to 5:00 o'clock at the end of Three Mile Bridge. Then finally, we will end up back at Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Park from 5:30 until we drop. We're planning outreach and education activities and hope that all will have a good time. You can find out more about our one-year anniversary celebration by going to Upside Pensacola on Facebook. Again, it's October 15th, and you can see what's going on in today's Occupy Pensacola by going to Upside Pensacola on Facebook. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mueller, please come on, take care of your next card, if you will.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. A number of comments have been made by our city manager and Mr. Reynolds, and I don't think it's quite fair. He intimates that the mayor won't see me because I'm part of Occupy, and Occupy has sued against him. By that analogy, or we'll use an analogy to figure this out, that would mean if somebody in the Navy sued the mayor, that nearly 20% of the adult population of this town would not have access to the mayor. You know, I'm not signatory to that specific lawsuit. It will affect me the same way that it affects everybody sitting here. Does that mean that you guys should not have access to the mayor? I don't think so. I think his, though I do believe that his point was right on for why the mayor should be here, because there are times when sunshine laws are going to affect citizens that have, that need to talk to the mayor face-to-face and can't do that because of lawsuits or some kind of problem that might arise. I, you know, I can't see a downside to a lawsuit at this point. Mr. Reynolds, I was raised on a farm, and on the farm, what we would say right now is that, you know, you're a bullshitter that got caught standing in a pile of crap. You were nice enough to read off your bookmark, nice enough to try to bullshit me and not read the whole way.
Please, your comments to the please.
Oh, I'm sorry. He was nice enough to not read the whole way. As Mr. Messer pointed out, you go down a little further down that, and it proves my point exactly. Mr. Messer is going to make good money. My attorney's going to make good money. The citizens of Pensacola are going to be served by having the mayor here. I don't see a downside to a lawsuit. And I just, I want to, I seriously, honestly want to thank you for giving me the time to say this. I really appreciate it.
Okay. Ms. Sharon Myers?
I just wanted to do this because I haven't done this in two years.
Read your bracelet.
Oh, I forgot my bracelet. It is still out in the car, though. What I want to address is a subject that, of course, is very personal to me, and that is how I feel as a woman regarding comments that are made on certain blogs referring to councilwomen as witches. Now, you may think that that's not a serious term, but I want you to look at it in its historical context. When people refer to me or any other woman as a witch, I find it extremely offensive. I want you to remember the history of women. Thousands, perhaps millions, of women during the Middle Ages were burned at the stake, hanged, mutilated, and tortured for being witches. When this country was founded, witch burning, witch hanging were common in the United States. When women came to this country when it was founded, we had the same legal status as slaves. It was lawful to beat your wife. When I was in law school, I remember there were some states that still had statutes that punished women by dunking them for gossiping. Women are still the primary objects of violence in our country. In pornography, the number-one subject in a lot of pornography is bondage, the rape, mutilation of women. In this world today, there are millions of women who are subject every day or every year to female castration, mutilation. Women are still stoned. Women in half the countries on this planet do not have equal rights. This earth has not progressed as far as we would like for it to. So I am saying to you that when I hear the word witch, it is synonymous to me with another word that starts with an N. When I hear the word bitch, which refers to women as dogs, it's synonymous to me with another word. What I want us to do is increase our consciousness and awareness about terms that are degrading to people, and that's one of them. I am often referred to as a witch on the N Weekly blog. Just today, I was referred to as a witch, and the person also went even further and said that they would like to see me burnt at the stake, and he or she, I don't know who the blogger is, because they are rather cowardly and anonymous, would furnish the matches. Now, I guarantee you, if this type of inflammatory statements were made toward minorities, I think people would be outraged about it. But people can make those remarks about women, and it seems to be perfectly acceptable.
Continue.
So, I just want, I was offended when the mayor did not even call the three women to attend his press conference. I think had that happened to the minority members of council, it would be front-page coverage. It's barely mentioned in the press, and the only reason it was mentioned in the press is because I happened to be in the building at the time, talking to a reporter about something else. So, the reason I'm standing here today is because I love you. I feel close to you, even though I disagree with some of you. And I just wanted to share my feelings with the people that I love. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Councilwoman Myers, I want, it reminds me of something that John Lennon said, and you might remember what he said. It was, women are the, and I won't use the word, but it started with an N, of the world. That's what John Lennon said. I read those comments, and I'm offended by them myself. I feel sorry for our community that it's allowed, those comments are allowed to stay up. We talk about, there's talk about removing comments that are that offensive, and I would have hoped that the publisher of that particular, well, I would have hoped that they would have removed those. I find them extremely offensive to myself, to me, myself, and I want to apologize on behalf of the community. I don't always agree with the ladies on this council, but I respect them, and I find those comments very offensive. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wu?
I also want to tell Councilman Myers how much I appreciated your comments. My mother came to this country as a person that could barely speak English. When she got to Hawaii, everybody got off the boat to go sightseeing, and she was told since she was coming here to marry my father, there was no need for her to go do any sightseeing. Her English was not very good, so therefore, it was very difficult for her in many situations. I have no right to speak for anyone but myself, but I apologize for the terminology that's been used for you and the other women, because I think it's been very inappropriate. Unfortunately, all of us in public life become targets. Today, somebody wrote something, and they quoted me wrong, and then they went on and said anybody that was close to the mayor lacked integrity and character. And I wrote a response that I didn't put in there, but I think it would be apropos for what you were saying. I said, "You quoted me incorrectly, and when attacking a person's character and integrity, be careful. Be very careful. It is very easy to throw bombs when you don't have the guts to give your name." That's one thing, if somebody comes up and says something to you face-to-face, but to hide behind names like the Lone Ranger or whatever, I have very little respect for people like that. But again, I'm speaking just for myself. I apologize to you and the other members of the council, women, members of the council, because I think what's happened probably is very inappropriate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. You know, sometimes you expect some sort of ridicule by acting, being a public servant, but you can go to the extreme, and it is most degrading to have to listen to that type of verbiage that being directed toward our colleagues, and I'm going to apologize also. We don't need that. We're here to serve the public. We do the best we can. If you disagree with this, I would hope that you'd be civil. Those kinds of things are uncalled for, and it's just hurtful to hear the kind of remarks that Councilwoman Myers had to state, and she'd been subjected to those kinds of remarks. And as Councilman Wu said, they feel brave, because they, you don't have to put the name out there to be seen, so we can just characterize them as cowards. Okay. Councilman Gerald?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I don't apologize for them, because I consider them to be adults. I think that the responsibility for deleting those kinds of comments rests with the editor and the publisher of the paper. And if they're going to allow that kind of garbage and then have the audacity to print it and circulate it, it's on them. That's where the problem really is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Beverly Perry. Come on, Ms. Perry.
I'm Beverly Perry. I'm a citizen of Pensacola. I was watching-
Push it, push the mic down a little bit.
I was watching the meeting on TV tonight and felt like I needed to come down. Lot has gone on tonight. When I watch the city council, I know that they work for me, the voter, and I understand from tonight that the city attorney works for both the mayor and the city council, and is not supposed to have conflict of interest there. Is that what I understood from earlier? I couldn't tell from watching Mr. Reynolds as the mayor's designee here, whether he works for the city council and the mayor. That would be one of my questions. Before I move on to something else, I'd like, I wish that the designee and the mayor would be at the meetings. This is the first time I've seen the mayor at a meeting, and I know that he's done a lot of good things for this city, and I have favorable comments to make about him, but I would like to see him at the meetings. I don't think that a strong mayor has to have a weak council. I appreciate the moves of the council to be strong. I appreciate that all the council works for the voters, no matter how they voted tonight. And I don't think, I think it's better for government, government is much better if the council and the mayor are strong. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down, Ms. Perry. Okay, the final call for tonight is, Ms. Trump, Mark?
Thank you, Councilwoman Townsend. I'll just be real brief, but addressing what Ms. Myers was speaking about. I don't typically back up the media guys too much, but I did want to, I thought it needed to be clear that, I too was very disturbed by that, and actually, to the extent that I sent Rick an email about it, and to his justice and defense, he did delete it within about five minutes of that email, so, you know, I just thought that should be clear, because we did take a few swings in that direction tonight. But I was deeply disturbed, and I'm very sorry to all the women that that came out. I do believe that Mr. Alton did the right thing, certainly by deleting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else coming before this group? Meeting adjourned.